Just a byproduct, that is the byproduct, and it makes what I do noble.
So you say you've always been the funniest kid in school?
Yes.
And that kind of stuff. What? What?
Hi, I'm Dr. Bregge, your superintendent. Today I'm going to talk to you about an incredible foundation that supports our district and your children in more ways than I have time to share. We receive amazing support from many organizations and people throughout our community. These include our PTA's, alumni associations, and our foundation called BHEF. BHEF stands for Beverly Hills Education Foundation. They are a not-for-profit dedicated to BHUSD, and they've been supporting our schools for over 40 years. BHEF is right in the middle of their annual Thanks For Giving campaign, which directly helps each and every student here in BHUSD. BHEF helps raise money and awareness for BHUSD. They support quality curriculum and exceptional teaching through innovative programs. Without BHEF, we would not have such robust programs, just to name a few. PBIS, the Science Fair, athletic coaches for both the middle and high school, robotics, visual and performing arts, and our college counseling programs. If you'd like to memorialize the time your child has spent at BHUSD, BHEF offers a naming program where your family's name can be dedicated to a particular area that has touched the journey your child and family have had at BHUSD. These range from auditoriums, to trees, to classrooms. Sometimes people ask us how BHEF is different from PTA. Generally speaking, it is fair to say that BHEF pays for people, and PTA pays for things. We also get asked where donations should be directed, to PTA or to BHEF. Well, the answer is both. At BHUSD, we're great at sharing. And because of this, BHEF and PTA often co-support our students. I want to take a moment to personally thank the Beverly Hills Education Foundation for all the work that they do behind the scenes. And if you want to support our students through BHEF, please visit their website at bhef.org today. As you can tell, we're starting to do a lot more of our communication through video, so I want to thank Ms. Starkins, and also, she has an assistant that she's working with as an intern, and his name is Nathan Hanoké. And he did all of this work under her direction, so I want to thank them for that. I also want to give a special thank you to one of our cabinet members, Mr. Seaman, who was instrumental in our Science and Engineering Fair. So I want to thank him for all the work that he put in, and representing the cabinet in this process. And at this time, I would love to turn this over to Mr. Kruger, and to Ms. Trost, and to Ms. Pennerson.
Hello, thank you for having us. All right, well, students, parents, thank you for coming. We are very excited. This is actually our fifth year doing the Science Fair, so it's very exciting that we're half a decade. So that means it's officially part of Beverly Hills' culture. So before I bring up the winners, I just wanted to highlight why we do the Science Fair, why it's important. You know, all of you students, you go to class every day, you're in your textbooks, you're being lectured. But the purpose of the Science Fair is to get you out of the textbook, and to help you come up with your own ideas, and give you an opportunity to roll your sleeves up and get your hands dirty. And that's where you start to connect the dots. And it's funny, if you ask anybody, "What was your science term paper in ninth grade?" Nobody remembers. But if you ask somebody, "What was your science fair project in ninth grade?", everybody remembers. So that's why we do it every year. We want to thank the BHEF for always funding this event. So lastly, most of these students will go on to represent Beverly Hills High School in Beverly Vista at the LA County Science Fair, and potentially the state Science Fair, and then the national Science Fair. So there's a whole program here that we really want you guys to be exposed to. So why don't we bring up our winners? We're going to present to you certificates of recognition from the Beverly Hills School Board. So first, we'll start with our sixth grade winners. Let's get the project name. All right, we've got, so Noah Niman, Magnetic Forces to Move Weights. Could you come on up? Here. So could you just stand right here for a moment? We'll get all the sixth graders up. And then Yar Solav Kutepov. Kutepov, you'll have to pronounce it for me. His project was the first-place winner, Which Bridge is Stronger? And I know it was the triangular bridge, right?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't you stand here and take a quick picture? One thing, the criteria for the Science Fair is a combination of how they apply the scientific method, the originality of their idea, but most importantly, it's how they're able to articulate their idea. That's really one of the most important factors. So these students were able to really communicate their project to the judges. Okay, thanks, boys. So we'll move on to seventh grade. Okay, so Tali Goldkorn, Heating a Pool Without Using Too Much Energy. Tali? Okay, why don't you stand up right here? And next, we have, tied for first place, Karuna Kruger, Chloe Majad, Phoebe Crivoy, Will the Dead Sea Die? And so what was the answer? Will the Dead Sea Die?
Uh, no.
No.
Okay. I guess, yes, it's because man is involved, that's the problem.
Because he's in first place.
Oh, did we miss somebody?
Nope, they're close.
Okay. And then, lastly, for third place, Sarah? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm missing here. Keep me on track, Jen. Second place, Remy Javizad, Benjamin Bakshian, and Ryan Mosazedo. How does the amount of dissolved content in water affect electrolysis? Are you guys here? Come on up.
Yes.
You want to hand it to them?
Yes.
and your children in more ways than I have time to share. We receive amazing support from many organizations and people throughout our community. These include our PTAs, alumni associations, and our foundation called BHEF. BHEF stands for Beverly Hills Education Foundation. They are a not-for-profit dedicated to BHUSD, and they've been supporting our schools for over 40 years. BHEF is right in the middle of their annual Thanks For Giving campaign, which directly helps each and every student here in BHUSD. BHEF helps raise money and awareness for BHUSD. They support quality curriculum and exceptional teaching through innovative programs. Without BHEF, we would not have such robust programs, just to name a few. PBIS, the Science Fair, athletic coaches for both the middle and high school, robotics, visual and performing arts, and our college counseling programs. If you'd like to memorialize the time your child has spent at BHUSD, BHEF offers a naming program where your family's name can be dedicated to a particular area that has touched the journey your child and family have had at BHUSD. These range from auditoriums to trees to classrooms. Sometimes people ask us how BHEF is different from PTA. Generally speaking, it is fair to say that BHEF pays for people and PTA pays for things. We also get asked where donations should be directed, to PTA or to BHEF. Well, the answer is both. At BHUSD, we're great at sharing. And because of this, BHEF and PTA often co-support our students. I want to take a moment to personally thank the Beverly Hills Education Foundation for all the work that they do behind the scenes. And if you want to support our students through BHEF, please visit their website at bhef.org today. As you can tell, we're starting to do a lot more of our communication through video, so I want to thank Ms. Starkins. And also, we did, she has an assistant that she's working with as an intern, and his name is Nathan Hanokay. And, and he did all of this work under her direction, so I want to thank them for that. I also want to give a special thank you to one of our cabinet members, Mr. Seaman, who was instrumental in our Science and Engineering Fair. So I want to thank him for all the work that he put in and representing the cabinet in this process. And at this time, I would love to turn this over to Mr. Kruger, and to Ms. Trost, and to Ms. Pedersen.
Hello, thank you for having us. All right, well, students, parents, thank you for coming. We are very excited. This is actually our fifth year doing the Science Fair, so it's very exciting that we're half a decade. So that means it's officially part of Beverly Hills culture. So before I bring up the, the winners, I just wanted to highlight what, why we do the Science Fair, why it's important. You know, all of you students, you go to classroom, class every day, you're in your textbooks, you're being lectured. But the purpose of the Science Fair is to get you out of the textbook and to help you come up with your own ideas and give you an opportunity to roll your sleeves up and get your hands dirty. And that's where you start to connect the dots. And it's funny, if you ask anybody, what, what was your science term paper in ninth grade? Nobody remembers. But if you ask somebody, what was your Science Fair project in ninth grade? Everybody remembers. So that's why we do it every year. And we want to thank the BHEF for always funding this event. So lastly, most of these students will go on to represent Beverly Hills, Beverly Hills High School in Beverly Vista at the LA County Science Fair, and potentially the state Science Fair, and then the national Science Fair. So there's a whole program here that we really want you guys to be exposed to. So why don't we bring up our winners? We're going to prevent you, present to you certificates of recognition from the Beverly Hills School Board. So first, we'll start with our sixth grade winners. Let's get the project name. All right, we've got, so Noah Niman, Magnetic Forces to Move Weights. Could you come on up? So once you, could you just stand right here for a moment? We'll get all the sixth graders up. And then Yar Solav Kutepov, Kutepov? You'll have to pronounce it for me. His project was the first place winner, Which Bridge is Stronger? And I know it was the triangular bridge, right?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't you stand here and take a quick picture? One thing, the, the criteria for the Science Fair is a combination of how they apply the scientific method, the originality of their idea, but most importantly, it's how they're able to articulate their idea. That's really one of the most important factors. So these students were able to really communicate their, their project to the judges. Okay, thanks, boys. So we'll move on to seventh, seventh grade. Okay, so Tali Goldkorn, Heating a Pool Without Using Too Much Energy. Tali? Okay, why don't you stand up right here? And next we have, first, tied for first place, Karuna Kruger, Chloe Majad, Phoebe Crivoy, Will the Dead Sea Die? And so what was the answer? Will the Dead Sea Die?
Uh, no.
No.
Okay. I guess, yeah, it's because man is involved, that's the problem. Oh, did we miss somebody? Okay. And then, lastly, for third place, Sarah, oh, I'm sorry, I'm missing here. Keep me on track, Jen. Second place, Remy Javizad, Benjamin Bachian, and Ryan Mosazedo. How does the amount of dissolved content in water affect electrolysis? Are you guys here? Come on up. Thank you, boys. Here, why don't you guys stand up here? And then, for seventh grade, we have third place, Sarah Jiang, Natalie Moon, and Aviv. I think Sarah's here, is that right? Will you come on up? Their project was, Does the Age of Wood on a String Instrument Effect Its Sound? And so what was the conclusion in terms of the wood?
It does.
So is it older wood or younger wood that's better?
The older wood has like more mature sound, the younger wood has like a more like a young sound.
But what if you're middle-aged like me? I didn't, I didn't qualify. Okay. So lastly, for seventh grade, we have two special awards from Rediscover and Sylvan, which were for innovation and for the environment. Jayden Ben Murray, for Ben Murray, so excuse me, How to Minimize Fire Spread with Plants, which is a timely topic. Thank you. And the Sylvan Award, Nicole Gorbacheva, What Happens When You Mix Acid, Vinegar, and a Base? Oh, Nicole's here. She's not here, I apologize. Okay, you guys, thank you so much. That's everybody. All right, so we're almost done. Eighth grade. So the first, what are we starting with? The first place award is for, We Want to Create Something to Reduce Waste. So this is a project around how balloons interact with the environment. Odilia Shavot, Leila Kashani, Sophia Manavi, and Rachel Cohen. And I know you guys were, did a lot of work in Ms. Crane's class to be inspired by this, is that right? By the way, Alexis Crane is our faculty advisor, and so she really helps work with them to revise or refine their project. Okay, so second place? Are we missing one? All right, well, we'll just keep going while we find yours. Okay, second place, Vincent Lau, A Solution to the Fresh Water Sortage. And last but not least, Mia Patel and Iman Ali, UV Index and SPF. Okay, thank you so much, students. Give them a round of applause. Okay, so now we're going to wrap it up for the high school. Now, high school students, they actually win scholarship money, and I believe Ms. Trost from the BHEF has that money. I think they requested small bills, is that what you brought? No, I don't know the exact dollar amounts. Can you tell us? Do you know of him? So we have for, we'll start with third place, How Taking a Cold Shower Can Change Your Life, by Manoush Jadidoli and Justin Kateri. Will you guys come on up?
That's a $300 award.
Okay, so it's $300 check. Which you're really supposed to use for college. So parents put it in an account they can't access. Thank you, guys. If you could just stand up here. Okay, so for, we have a tie for second. Jayden Biloxa, Audio as a Form of Image Transmission, come on up. Jayden, we've seen you a few times at Science Fair, so.
What?
We've seen you a few times at Science Fair, so we're glad that you're continuing to bring it on into the high school.
Of course.
And then tied for second was Jacob Geddy, Root Down, Designing the Optimal Environment for Vegetation. These are $300 checks. Thank you. And who do we have left? So first place, Jaclyn Bachian, Effects of SR4 and SR19 in Triple Negative Breast Cancer. Thank you most, oh, $500. You guys, thanks so much for all your hard work, and we hope to see you at LA County Science Fair. Oh, we do have one last Science Fair winner that showed up. Pega Yazdani from sixth grade. She did a project on volcano eruption. Thank you so much. Will you stand up here and take a picture with the high school kids? All right. You guys, thank you so much for having us every year. Lastly, can I just give a quick thank you to our committee? Jen Pedersen and Michelle Calt, who's not here, and Tina Wiener, and there's a few others. It really is a labor of love, so thank you for continuing to do this every year with us.
On behalf of BHEF, Nathan, we would like to thank you and the entire BH Science Fair and for everything that you do year after year to make this happen and work. It would not be without the labor of love, as you mentioned, that you and Michelle and so many of you put into this, and we're eternally grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. If you are not staying for the rest of the festivities tonight, I will give you a moment to clear the room. Don't worry, you don't have to feel rude. You're going to miss a discussion on actuarial reports.
Thank you. Good to see you all.
Jeff Pileman is here.
That's worth staying.
Hi, how are you?
Okay, I did get an email for a public comment that I am going to read tonight. It'll be put into the record. This is from Farah Dodds. Hello, Board and District Admin. I think it's safe to say that it's no secret I was against reconfiguration. I've heard that there are grumblings from a handful of people in our parent community who have complaints regarding the transition at school sites, et cetera. With this email, I'd like to put the kibosh on those complaints. Every time I ask fellow parents what their thoughts are on reconfiguration and how the schools are faring, the vast majority of people respond with what I like to call hesitant yet exceptional optimism. That is, there are a few logistical hiccups, snags, to be expected, but the kids are thriving, particularly in the middle school. The kids are super thrilled with all of the new opportunities via sports and electives. Frankly, my daughter is already excited to head to BV next year to take animation class and join the Lunchtime Anime Club on Fridays. When it comes to the combining of the parent communities, specifically the BV community joining Horseman, I've been quite pleasantly surprised. We have two different, two very different community personalities, but they are not incompatible. Though it's only been a few short months, many parents have expressed that they feel the communities coalescing nicely, particularly after multicultural week and our Halloween events. I have no doubt that our sense of kinship toward one another and developing friendships will continue to solidify as the year progresses. Lastly, I would like to give a huge shout out to our admin team, Mr. Bugby, Mr. Regan, and Mrs. Joan. I like to call them the triumvirate. They are a fantastic team, each with strengths that complement the others. I honestly don't think we could have asked for a better team to lead Horseman to a bigger and brighter future, and I'm beyond thrilled that they are ours. Seriously, these people are keepers. All of this is to say, I'm quite happy to have been proven wrong regarding reconfiguration. I know it's still early and there's much work to be done, but thus far, my expectations have been exceeded beyond measure. Please know that the general sense on the ground is that the changes have been positive and that most parents are ready, eager, and willing to help our district succeed. Farah Dodds. So, thank you, Farah. It's nice to get words of encouragement when you do this job. Dr. Bregge, we have a presentation on branding.
Yes.
I know, she's going to address the item when it comes up. Thank you.
Good evening. It's great to be here to continue a conversation that we started back in July about our identity and about branding. And some things that we're going to update and talk to you about are some of the outcomes that we've, we've discussed and some of the feedback that we've had from the board, our progress to this date, some recommendations, and then some next steps. And you may be sitting there wondering, since it's been a long time since July, why this is so important? The reason this is so important is because our identity is quite well-known. In fact, it's well-known all over the world. And so there's an emotional image, there's also a physical response to your identity, and it's important to ensure that we get this right. When you think of some of the brand names that are out there, like Nike and their slogans, Just Do It, and their swoosh that they have, even Starbucks with the mermaid and the, you know, the, the green color that they use. All of these things are important in the identity to get it right, and you see very little alterations when it comes to the, the identity going forward when it, when you're looking at things like color and logo and mascot. We do have some control over our messaging, and so that's why we're going to talk to you a little bit more about where we are today with our program. After our meeting on the 22nd, the board did something that was really collaborative and was, was the right step in the right direction at the right time. And together, the board looked at combining a vision and mission statement, which you can see right here, which really should be starting off in, in all of our presentations. And this was implemented by the board shortly thereafter, I believe it was August.
So what we have achieved since we last met, firstly, is a district motto, which was really exciting because when we last spoke, the only motto that we had was for the high school. Today Well Lived, which was beloved, and we collectively, I think, agreed as a cabinet, and also the board agreed that we should not change that. It was an excellent motto to have. We then confirmed with the board that Education Reimagined would be an excellent logo, sorry, motto to move forward with for the entire district, which was really a culmination of reconfiguration and where we wanted to move forward in the future. I'm happy to announce tonight that we also have mottos for three of the schools under the direction from the board. BVMS, Hawthorne, and Horace Mann have all come up with their own mottos. You can read them there. BVMS, Unleashing Every Learner's Potential. Hawthorne, Today's Learners, Tomorrow's Creators. And Horace Mann, Learners Today, Leaders Tomorrow. I think this is an excellent step forward. It's about a legacy, it's more than just words. It's where we're going as a district and as each individual schools, and I think it gives each student a purpose and identity as a student there that they can be proud of. We certainly have seen that at the high school, that Today Well Lived is something that is well-known amongst all students and alumni. So the other thing that happened, which was a bit of a surprise but very exciting, was our new middle school, their new ASB, named their mascot, which is the Bulldog, which is very beloved, and they called it Barney the Bulldog. So that's been exciting to see that their students themselves have taken it upon themselves to find an identity and, and really solidify, you could call it branding, but you could also call it a way for everybody to be included in the journey of a middle school adventure.
So I'm not sure if you noticed, I hope that you did, that there has been a big update to our website. You can see that there is a consistent look to our website. You can see that the most important thing, which is updated photos, they appear there. And just the consistency of what you can find, this was a very big task. We actually had pictures on our website that weren't even of our own school. And so there were lots of surprises as Ms. Starkins went through and, and discovered that we needed updated photos, but also photos that just were a better representation of, of who we are and our identity. You also may have known in, in update to our social media presence, which is every day, sometimes several times a day. We, every school now has social media presence with Facebook and also Instagram as well. And the, the content, sometimes it's, once in a while it's a video, other times it's photographs, but the main purpose of our social media presence is to provide information and celebration. And so that's what you will see on all of these media sites. And keep in mind that these are open to the world, these are not closed sites, so the type of information that goes out about Beverly Hills Unified School District is always about the celebrations and the positive information that's happening in our school district.
So moving forward at this point, we come to this place of looking backwards for a moment to a time before I was with BHUSD, when the high school completed their entire style guide using the images that you can see on the screen. The only thing yet to be done is to roll out that style guide for the high school. So it's been completed, it's been paid for, the assets have been finished. There's one little area that needs to be corrected, which is the type of color. As you can see on the screen, it looks very red there, almost an El Rodeo red. It needs to be more of an orange color, and when that's printed in different formats, it's actually accurate. Some of the athletics uniform has already been rolled out, and that is the correct orange. You can see it also in the swim gym, but for printing purposes, and as you can see for things that are presented on the screen, that does need to be changed to a little bit more of an orange tone. So that is something that we are working with that company on to complete that color change, and then roll out all of those assets throughout the district. So this is a slide that we talked about in our last presentation, which is ways that we can use this style guide. And I thought it was important that we look back and say, what is this even for? What's the purpose again? Why, why do we need this? Well, the idea is to make everything uniform and cohesive. So whether it's on a business card, whether it's a brochure, looking at those assets from that previous screen, knowing, okay, me as a teacher, or if I'm in my position, what can I use in what areas? Is it a flyer? Is it the front of the graduation handbook? Is it for signage that's going outside on the external of the new construction? What are the ways in which we can use these assets that's identifiable for everybody to know, this is Beverly Hills, and this is who we are, and that that's recognizable for any, any person across the world, but also for our students and our staff within the district?
And so for next steps, as Ms. Starkins was just saying, updating the color for printing, and we're going to begin to roll out what those assets look like at the high school level. We're also evaluating right now the vendor options for the style guide and the assets through at least three different companies, and we are in the process of doing that. I think most importantly is that we're taking a school that has already done this work and has done it well, and we're respecting that work. And, and then we will work with the school population, the people, all the stakeholders, to ensure that, that rollout is, is seamless. And we hope that people will find that the controlling of our message about what it looks like is really going to set us apart. Your top school districts in the country follow style guides. And so we're excited that we are catching up with the other exemplary districts in the United States. And any questions?
Thank you so much for the presentation. And I think I'm very excited with the progress and hopefully getting apparel and all the, all the hats and everything, but the one thing that has been coming up with like clubs at the high school is just how to work within the branding guide to like create apparel for different organizations on campus. So moving forward, just working with the clubs to create an apparel and branding guide.
It's an excellent point, and that's what, exactly what we're talking about when we say the implementation of this style guide. So it was created, and just tweaking that orange color, and then rolling it out so that everybody is aware of, what font do I use? And which, which mascot of the different assets are we going to go with for this particular item? To make that really clear to everybody in a formal way. To make that really clear to everybody in a formal way that's very accessible, perhaps even on our website, for everybody to be able to see exactly what the expectations are.
Awesome. Thank you.
And just as an example, so let's say that there is an organization that wants to do, you know, some sort of hat or visor. I mean, it's, everyone has the option to, you know, use that style guide within what they believe students will want to wear or parents will, will want to wear, what people will buy. It's just, it's restricting the, that actual what color is being used, the, the actual, you know, the different mascots, the different, like that, it's really important that that part is, you know, that comes with the style guide. But as far as, you know, some people have asked me about, well, what happens if, you know, we want to sell scarves or we want to, you know, those things all fall within an acceptable thing to sell as long as the style guide is being upheld. And as Ms. Starkins pointed out too, you know, you've seen four or five different versions of, of our district logo. You've seen some people create their own letterhead with their own logo, things like that. That's going to be, you know, again, for, for a business professional appearance with, with our paperwork and our website and our emails, that's where everybody will be using something that's consistent.
Well, I think, I think this has been well thought out, well organized. I congratulate you and who, all the people that have worked on it. Very worthwhile. And as far as my wishes, I want to see the quality of the education, educational program match this work.
So I mentioned this before, but I'm going to say it again because I get really happy when I see stuff like this. My background is in marketing and branding. I can't even begin to agree with you enough how important it is for our brand, for what we're doing here, particularly with all of the changes that we're making. The only thing that I will say, because I always have to weigh in with my opinion on these things, is that for the style guide for the high school, when I was a student athlete here, we had a logo. It wasn't, it wasn't the actual Norman. I love what has been created. I would really love for our girls teams to have a female Norman, a lady Norman. I think this is not, it's a great representation for our male teams. As a female athlete, I would not be wanting to compete with this as a representation of who I'm working for. So I would love to see a lady Norman evolved from this for our, our lady teams. But beyond that, I think it's tremendous work. I'm really happy that you've brought this back to us, and I can't wait to see what else is in store.
Thank you for that feedback.
Not too much to say. Where does Barney live?
Not on campus, I hope.
Well, we just passed a policy about not having dogs on campus, so that could be a problem.
Does Barney exist? Does Barney, has someone really got a dog named Barney? Or do you just, is that just a pet?
I think there's a couple of people that have a bulldog. I think that that's maybe where that came from. But Barney does not live on campus.
The boxer, but that's beside the point. I'm a boxer fan. Just a, just a very brief comment. I am thrilled with all of this, and I think it's going to do a great deal for the community and for the feeling and the esprit de corps of Beverly Hills. And I think that this is going to help a lot for everybody to feel good about Beverly Hills again, just one little step toward that.
No, I think, I don't want to belabor this, but I think this is great. And I do agree with that policy. I think we have a problem with Barney, but it seems to be taken care of.
Barney was outside. It's okay, we can make an exception.
Be careful, because then tomorrow the paper's going to be like, board puts Barney to sleep or something like that. We love Barney, Barney's great, no dogs on campus.
Barney could be a service dog.
She's just saying, she's just overhauling the whole thing. Thank you for the update. I would echo what Tristan said. I, I looked at this graphic with, with the Norman, and I think it's right. I think the times have changed, and we don't need that representation anymore necessarily. So it should absolutely, I mean, I wouldn't care if it was a female for the actual logo completely. I don't, I don't, you know, I find most men to be irreprehensible morons, especially ones that did this stuff. So, you know, it's funny that we, we, our mascot is a kind of probably a plunderer, killer kind of person. That's our mascot, right? So that's what we have, that's what everybody does.
Changing times.
Right. So anyway, yeah, I would look into that if that's possible.
Thank you.
So Norma, right, a Norma and a Norman.
We will absolutely do that. It'll be interesting when we check back in with the group that actually started this work, if there was some conversation about that. But it's excellent feedback for us, and it's, it's going to be 2020.
Right.
Long overdue.
Viking to what? Is that a, I'm not even going to say that. You could, you could say it, Mrs. Hacker, you could say it. Vicky to Viking. There you go. I said it. Okay. Oh, we're having fun now. See, see what happens, Ms. Starkins, when you get us wound up?
Great.
Okay. We're going to move to consent calendar. I'm going to make a motion. We're pulling three items that I have. So I'll make the motion to approve the consent calendar minus items 10B1, 10J, and 10N.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. We're going to do, colleagues, if you don't mind, since Colleen is here from the finance committee, we're going to do 10N first. So, and then Colleen wanted to speak, so let me just put the item on the table for discussion, and then, Colleen, you can speak. So I'll make a motion to approve the acceptance of Gatsby 75 actuarial variation for period ending June 30th.
And I'll second.
Thank you very much. Colleen, you have the floor. You do not need a timer. Have at it.
Thank you, everybody. It's nice to see you. I'm here as the spokesperson and the chair of the finance committee, I should say the district finance committee. At our last committee meeting, we were advised of the Gatsby 75 actuarial valuation of the district's retiree health insurance program dated June 30th, 2019. We were also informed that the actuarial work was performed by Pacific Crest Actuaries. The firm's principal is T. Lewis Philiger. This information has raised questions for our committee members. We were intimately involved in the evaluating and the screening process of the previous actuary, Catherine McLeod, formerly of Bickmore Consulting Group. She was retained by the board upon our committee recommendation. In our opinion, she's been an excellent professional, giving us sound advice, doing exceptional work, and her fees are reasonable. We were left with questions regarding the termination of her services. That's point number one. By the way, this was discussed by, with my committee members, and we also consulted with, and I go on to report Marty Frank. Marty is a former member of our committee. He was instrumental in the actuarial work. He is an actuary. So he reviewed this report, the June 30th, 2019 actuary report, and with our current member, Joe Safier, who is a CPA, we note that Pacific Crest Actuaries has significantly changed the actuarial assumptions underlying the Beverly Hills School District's plans' actuarial liabilities. These new actuarial assumptions have resulted in drastically reducing the district's Gatsby liabilities, and I would underline that statement. Of great concern is the size of the reduction from 19 million to 14 million, a 26% reduction. We would suggest that the board members thoroughly understand the assumption made in this report, the rationale for changing these said assumptions. We feel this issue is of great importance to the district. This liability represents a significant portion of future district budget. It's of great importance that the assumptions made in this report reflect a responsible posture for future budget allocations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for Colleen before we open it up to the item on the table?
Do you have any idea, Colleen, and why he, why they did lower these? Do you have any?
I'm, I'm not of any help with you on that, Rochelle, because it's, it's technical in terms of the assumptions. It's not something I'm comfortable discussing. I think probably Wade would be a much better resource for me. No. Maybe we should have the, Mr. Philiger come to, and speak to the board and explain his, when we worked with Catherine, Catherine sat down and she explained her rationales. And we did understand them at that time, and they were ones that we felt comfortable with. And I believe that my understanding anyway, that her, her assumptions were of more conservative posture. So that's what's brought our attention and why we're here today, is to have you look at it in greater detail.
I just want to make one little comment. Thank you for your committee and all of the people on your committee for the work that you do. It is really well needed, and we appreciate it.
We certainly mean well.
This brings up a very, how dedicated you are.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm not first to speak, so.
And Mr. Spitz?
As far as the change in the, in the actuary, I think that there is, as I recall from, from your last committee meeting, which I attended, I understood that it was necessary to make the change.
Wait, can you give, can you shed any light on this?
Trustees, I am not an actuary.
Right. As far as, as far as making the change.
I do believe Mr. Philiger said that part of it was required based on changes of law, part of it's required based on changes of market, as the market changes. And part of it is also driven by changes in health programs, healthcare cost programs. So there's many factors that go into an actuarial study. But I agree with Colleen that we may want to ask Mr. Philiger to come and speak to the board to get a better understanding, since I am not an actuary. Just for the board's information, though, Ms. McLeod and Mr. Philiger both worked as primaries for Bickmore. So they worked together before that company split apart. So they are very familiar with each other's work. And Mr. Philiger actually contacted Ms. McLeod during his process of creating this report. So he was in contact with the prior actuary.
Actually, I wasn't, I really wasn't asking you to give an actuarial.
Thank you.
But what I, what I was driving at was, my understanding from the meeting was that Mrs. McLeod wasn't available, that she didn't respond to the district.
I can respond to that, that we did research, we Googled her name, and she's very readily available.
She, I'm sorry?
We Googled her name. We, meaning Joe and Marty and myself. And you Google her name, and she's readily available. And she is in business now with, with another partner.
Well, I guess my question is, who made the decision?
That's my question.
To move from her to the, to the new source?
So staff reached, staff reached out to her initially because we wanted to continue to utilize her for the study. She was non-responsive, would not get back to staff in a timely manner. So we decided to go with another vendor. We would have, we would have used her had she responded in a timely manner.
Yeah, that, that's what, that's the information I was looking for. Okay, I'll, I'll have a little more to say as we, as we move into, into the actual item. Thank you.
We're here, say it.
It's in full, Mel.
We're here.
Around that item now.
You could go ahead, Mel. It's, it's on the table, so.
All right.
Do I stay here or?
Does anybody have any more questions for Colleen?
I mean, I'm perfectly willing to stand here, but.
I don't have questions, but I do have notes from the meeting, so I can, I can shed, I can share some of the information.
Colleen, you can have a seat if we need you. We'll have you come up. Thank you very much for your input on this. Go ahead, Mr. Spitz.
Well, I just want to say this, that I thought, I thought the information we received at the meeting was clear and understandable. And I would be very curious to get more information regarding the, the difference of a, an unfunded liability of 19 million as compared to 14 million. But the actuary did say that, that the unfunded liability is 14 million. And what was very impressive to me is that we, in the, in the program that, that we have adopted, as recommended, by the way, by the finance committee, has, is, is very effective. And if, if this projection is accurate, then by year 2030, the liability will be fully funded 11 years from now. And if that's true, I think that's fantastic. So I want to just close by saying that this, this program that we have adopted a few years ago, that this came to us from the finance committee, was a recommendation of the finance committee, and I want to give a shout out to, to them for that. And, and the former member, Martin Frank, who, who's an expert in this field, and, and it was a great contribution to the district.
Thank you, Ms. Walkus.
So I don't, I don't have questions. I respect the, the concerns that the finance committee has raised. I was there for the presentation. It was on a conference call. And in my notes, I have some specifics about the reduction. So there was a reduction in the discount rate that represented 4, 4,390,240. And there was also a reduction in the medical inflation for CalPERS, which was 3,605,087. So we continue to contribute 2% of our payroll plus pay-as-you-go. Mr. Philiger went into great detail about the crossover test, how the actual formula was used, and actually mentioned that he also had called, had reached out to some other colleagues in this area to confirm that the rate that he was applying was reasonable. The Gatsby 75 rate that was applied for the 20-year municipal double A-rated bond was 3.62%, which was what resulted in the lowered liability of 4.39 million. And I, and I agree with Mr. Spitz. I thought it was tremendous. To know that we have a plan and that we are being proactive, that with 10 to 11 years from now, we will, we will be fully funded in our current liability is a really good financial position to the end. So I, I think if it pleases the board and the finance committee, it'd be great to have Mr. Philiger here so he can go into more detail. This is really, really technical, a lot of these things. And while I wrote very good notes, I could not explain to you all of what it is that this means. But I think it'd be great to have him here.
I agree.
You know, to discuss what the change was from 2018 to 2019.
Thank you. Ms. Marcus?
Yeah, I was the person who wrote this question in the first time, and I had to reread this question several times to get some understanding of what went on. I'm not a member of the finance committee, although as a retired teacher, I am still receiving something from the district, having lived long enough. But the, the, so I'm not really completely familiar with this, and I would have liked to have had the, the discussion and the explanation that you're now talking about from the gentleman, Mr. Philiger. So I'm just going to pass and leave it at that because I'm not knowledgeable enough about it, except about, you know, someone who's getting benefits.
Right. So first of all, Mrs. Nair, I want to really thank you for being here before us and taking the time to bring this to our attention. I have very, I have a lot of respect for Mr. Safier, yourself, and Mr. Frank. And I do understand that the purpose of the finance committee is to serve as an advisory board to this board. And so I don't take that lightly at all. And like Mrs. Schuman just mentioned, I would really like to see this, this come before the board, the explanation that was, the discussion that took place at your finance committee meeting, so that the board is, so that I, as one board member, I can't speak for the entire board, but I'd like to really understand. What concerns me is what Mr. Frank has said. What concerns me is what Mr. Frank has said and Mr. Saphier, yourself, that you are, you have great concern about the shortfall or the difference. I like to pay attention to that, but I can't do that, I'm not an actuary, so I cannot really weigh in without that professional discussion in front of me. So if it's okay, I'd like to recommend that we table this and have that discussion. I'd like to hear from Marty Frank. I really have a lot of respect for Marty Frank. This is his level of industry. I mean, he's well-known in this area. I think you are too, to some degree. And so I would really want to understand from Marty what he's looking at exactly that alarms him.
So before we, I want to get an answer to one question. Wade, is there any issue if we table this?
Our internal, excuse me, our external auditors use this information as part of the audit report. They can still use this information, even though the board tables it, they can still use the work that's been done. So there's really no impact.
Okay. So if we just held this over, if we can get my colleague's request taken care of, then it would be okay?
I can check with the vendor to see when he's available to come, either physically or through a telephone conversation.
Okay. Does that work?
I would comment that Marty has said to me that he'd be very happy to come and review and give you his version of understanding the assumptions versus Mr. Philiger, and then you'd have a picture of.
Okay.
Sure.
What influences the assumptions.
So Wade, we can put that together. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to withdraw my motion. Who made the second?
I seconded. I seconded the withdrawal.
Okay. So withdraw the motion, and then we'll make a motion to table this item. Hopefully, we'll get a calendar at the next meeting. If not, you'll let us know when it comes back. So I'll make the motion to table this item until the next available meeting, when everybody is here to answer questions.
You need a second?
I do.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're very welcome, Ms. Vice President. Let's move back to item 10B1. 10B1, the certificated report. So for discussion, I'll make the motion to approve the certificated personnel report. Thank you very much, Mr. Spitz. Who would like to tackle this first?
Yeah, so I just wanted to, I did not ask about this. I actually missed it on the certificated report, probably because I remember, after I read the question that some other board member asked, I saw that we had remembered approving this back in, I think, October. And so my question is, I just want to make clarification. What Hebrew courses do we hire right now, do we offer at the high school besides Hebrew 1 and 2?
We currently offer Hebrew 1, 2, 3, and 4, to give students the opportunity to be able to take the world language all four years, obviously for the post-secondary application, but also just for their opportunity to learn.
So, but, okay, so just, so have we always offered 3 and 4, or is that something that we started with, what you're proposing?
We've offered all four levels for as many Norman guides as I can get access to, so well over probably 15, closer to 20 years.
So those classes are taught here at the high school?
Correct.
Okay. So what is different about what we're offering now? Because my understanding was that we only, from the first, what was it? The first board connection, when this first came about, it only talked about Hebrew 1 and 2. So my understanding was that we were only offering Hebrew 1 and 2 at the high school. But now, that's why I want to clarify, you're saying we offer Hebrew 1, 2, 3, and 4. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So what is it that we're adding with this additional, we're offering what, how many units or?
We're now, yeah, we're, so.
Seven-eighth unit? How many?
Six fifths.
Six fifths.
So we're adding an additional fifth. And the purpose behind this is because, one, in this, we kind of opened up this conversation even on October 15th around the graduation requirements. Currently, right now, our graduation requirements align with A through G, which requires two years of world language, of a single world language. So you can't take Spanish one and then French one. In addition, almost, I would say 100%, I'm going on a limb here, but I would say almost 100% of four-year institutions, of four-year post-secondary options, will require two years of a single language as well. So by us offering Hebrew, we have more and more students that we're starting to see that are coming in with strata or skills. Some of them are transferring in from, like, Arkham Hillel. So those kids that we needed to create an actual additional course, because Hebrew is a world language that does not offer a capstone course, meaning advanced placement. So in Spanish, French, we offer 1, 2, 3, 4, and AP. So there's actually five levels of world language. So when a student maybe that moves here from Spain or even Central America and has high enough skills in Spanish can go into 4, and then they take AP to have the two years of world language on their transcript. Right now, I have, or we have, I don't know why I use "I." They're not my students, my kids. But, yeah. So right now, in placement, we had a large group, meaning kind of come together, they transferred in that maybe in past might have went to a private school that have come to us, that have been able to place directly into Hebrew 4 as a freshman or as a sophomore. So we have six students that are sitting there with, if we choose not to offer, meaning Ms. Snyder and I have been collaborating with, came also at the high school to create this course, Hebrew and Literature, to give them that fifth option. So meaning those kids then will have the two years of world language on their transcript to meet our graduation requirements, but also to be able to apply for post-secondary. If not, then it would just be Hebrew 4 on their transcript.
And so what class are we offering again? We're offering AP?
No, there isn't an AP in Hebrew. And there isn't an online option either.
So what class beyond, so we're offering 1, 2, 3, and 4?
4. And so we worked, we worked over the summer, and because we knew these students were obviously taking Hebrew 4 last year as freshmen and as sophomores, we worked over the summer on creating Hebrew and Literature. So we submitted it to CSFUCs, all the proper notification programs that we need to do to ensure that the students get the proper credit for taking the course. Because we're one of the few high schools left that actually offer Hebrew that require a public credential, meaning we're not, if we're a private school, we could have people with credentials, but we could also ask other people to come and teach that course. Because we are regulated by California Teaching Credential, we have to have somebody with a credential to teach the Hebrew course in there. I mean, we're one of the few left. So same way with Polish, German, there's a lot, Latin's another one, where there just isn't an AP option and there isn't an online option. And so fewer and fewer schools are offering this program.
So here's my question. How many students are we providing this for? Or I guess the question is, you know, when, the reason why I was confused by this is because, again, in the board connection in October, it talked about this happening next year. The way it was presented, it was something that we're looking for next year.
If you look at the board connection, it's actually us talking about.
2021.
The possibility of removing Hebrew 1 and starting to phase the program out. And so, because if not, we're going to be in this position moving forward multiple years. So we have to kind of come to a decision of maybe looking at, do we want to continue the program, or do we want to have a slow phase out of it in the next couple of years?
So that's why I was confused, because it seems like we've always, so now, by answering the question, that we've always had Hebrew 1, 2, and 3, and 4, and we've always had students folding into Beverly Hills High School. My question is, how does this, you know, how many students again? Did you say?
There's six students currently that we've identified that has a Hebrew 4 and no other world language on their transcript.
You know, I just think that for purposes of controlling classes and, you know, our, you know, we started this discussion and reconfiguration by having this conversation that we were over, you know, we were overflowing with curriculum and program in some areas and shortened some other areas. And so I don't want to create that, you know, for the high school. I think we really need to assess, you know, what the needs are. And I understand that there's five students, but I've had a few parents ask me, why aren't we offering Chinese? Or, you know, how did you guys all make an assessment? And I'm not sure that the board really had a discussion. So what I'd like to do, just so that as we go forward to next year, is maybe have a study session or something to really have the board understand why this is so critical or a need, especially if you're thinking of maybe folding out the program to a lesser degree next year. You know, how this all plays in, because I think we have to have that conversation so that other parents listening can understand how we came to this, how we adopted this program. My other question that I've been asked is, you know, how was this program advertised? I know that when we advertise for, for example, you had, I think, communications being offered through West LA College. There was a description of the program, an opportunity to sign up, there was a flyer, it was announced, it was circulated. There was a process for everyone to buy into that. I didn't really see that with this, and I just want to make sure that, you know, how did these students, how did these students come about? Where did they evolve from? And so that we're not missing other students. The other question I have is, how does this affect our profile? Because if you're adding more classes of a higher level, you have to report that on the profile. And then the students who don't want to do, who are not as good in Hebrew, they're frowned upon when they go to colleges, because the colleges are like, well, you could have taken a higher level of Hebrew. And so it starts to affect us in ways that perhaps this board hasn't really had a conversation about, or we haven't really had an opportunity to discuss. So I don't want to create a problem for other students unnecessarily, just because we're trying to fulfill an opportunity for five students. And so I want to make sure that we're looking for the greater good and that we are not, you know, introducing a challenge for these students as they prepare their academic work and present that to a possible university in the future. And also, what other languages are out there? If we're, you know, I want to see what other languages are, you know, we get students who come from private school, what other languages are coming in here, you know, that we haven't identified as a language course or offerings that we can expand upon. So I think that, I don't know how my colleagues feel, if they have any questions, but I just want to make sure we're a little careful. I know that when this first started, we started with AP Literature, but now it seems like it's, every week I see new things happening, and we need to just be a little.
So let me jump in and kind of address some of your questions. So Hebrew is here, and I probably, I'm going to even look to some of the board members that have been in the district for many years, well prior to our administration, even.
Four levels, right.
Yeah, yeah. And so it's a necessity almost, because what we would be doing is preventing students' opportunities post-secondary. So they would then have to jump into Spanish one or French one, because we've already provided a program to them by allowing them to take Hebrew 4 as a freshman or a sophomore student. So it's kind of denying access. I'm going to be totally transparent. And I can't market a program for students that don't have the skills to be able to take the class. So it's like saying, I should be marketing AP Calculus, but you can't take AP Calc unless you've taken Algebra, Geometry, Algebra 2, and then got into Calculus. So the course was only provided to the students that had the skill, and that's by the teacher and the counselor. Those were the kids that were in the Hebrew class last year, that the rest of them have either graduated or discontinued the program. But those six kids that still needed on their transcript, we, as a public institution, need to, I believe, I'm going to say that, even though I'm not a voting member, need to provide those students the opportunity to be able to have a post-secondary option. And then I do believe that maybe next year, we should have that conversation of, you know, we are a smaller high school than we've ever been previous, and we are running three levels of world language and multiple other courses, in that, you know, Mr. Roach had done a cost analysis for us around just the staffing piece, and there might be some areas that we can possibly pull back a little bit.
But don't we, so you started off by saying that in this, and somewhere I read that there's two years required for graduation, correct?
Correct.
Two years. Okay. So we're already kind of offering that, and I know that the eighth graders can come in, and that could be part of the transcript. We do that all the time with, like, Spanish, I don't know whether the language, but if a child takes Spanish, I think it's 3, 4, I think it goes on their transcript, and then they start, or even 1, 2, it starts from that level when they hit the high school. So we could do that for this. If a student's coming in from private school, we could use one year. Could we not? And capture that in the transcript already?
No, because, so in, we actually, well, in our board policy, it actually states that we don't provide credit on the high school transcript for middle school work.
But the Spanish.
That's our board policy. And so we place students out of middle school into higher-level Spanish, higher-level French. But again, to have that two years to meet the UC requirements or even any of the Ivy League, Ivy League is probably looking for no minimum than three, if not maximum, I mean, required four, even with the work in the middle school. So the reason Spanish and French can be successful in this way is because they have the advanced placement. So if you look at a lot of those previous students that had graduated, they took French or Spanish in the middle school for the two years, placed into Spanish 2 or French 2 as a freshman, and then got to AP French and AP Spanish by their fourth year of high school. Unfortunately, in Hebrew, I'm going to use German, I'm going to use Polish, I'm going to use, no, Italian has an AP exam. There's a couple other languages out there that still do not have an AP-level curriculum, and this would be one of those. And that's kind of where it puts us, kind of paints us in a corner a little bit. If we're going to have the A through G requirements, which requires two years, but we also want to work on our college and career readiness standard, you know, through the California Dashboard, to say, our students are prepared to be admitted into a four-year institution, we have to look for ways to be able to provide at minimum the two years required for the students on that transcript. That's kind of how it got us here to this position. We did look at, if you recall, I did look at even trying to revamp the American Sign Language Program by being able to bring that as an after-school opportunity through West LA Partnership, which will meet the world language requirement for post-secondary options. Unfortunately, we didn't have enough students, even with all the marketing opportunities we did put out there for them to enroll for West LA to give us a full-time faculty member to come teach the course.
Did you pursue, but students can always enroll on their own, right, at the colleges with the same opportunity, basically, but not through a class? They can go and.
Correct.
Dual enrollment or?
Yeah. And so, I mean, any student has the opportunity to take free courses within SMC or West LA on their campus.
Right.
So, yeah, they have that option as well.
So that's something that we can also do to pursue future options.
I don't think they do.
Yeah.
I don't think that they have a Hebrew program.
And I don't know that for sure, but.
I just like to chime in here on another thought that I thought Mrs. Hacker was alluding to it, I'm not sure. And that was something that I am pretty strong on, and that is that there are only, as you said, six kids in this class. And I'm concerned about the number of students in the class and the fact that we are adding classes with fewer students in them, and that seems to bother me, because I feel like we are, we do have a maximum or a number that per teacher that the kids can, the teachers can have per student, I believe it's 145, if I'm not mistaken. And by adding students like this, or adding classes like this, you're diluting that number. And it's, I think we're now at, as I recall, reading somewhere, we're like at 109, is that the thing? And to me, we've just spread that out even a little thinner with our budget and our expenditures. So I have reservations about adding a class, and then with so few students in it. I understand the need for it, but I have strong feelings, because having had classes with nine and 10 kids in it, it bothered me. And so this, six kids in this class, and creating a fifth of a salary for it, is something that concerns me. And I understand the need to meet their needs, but I also have to think financially and to be fiscally responsible about that.
Well, I think with that, did you want to?
I do have a quick question.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We have a breakdown in the answers that we were given on Hebrew 1, 2, 3, and 4, and how many kids are in those different levels. Right now, in Hebrew 4, we've got 24 kids. So is it, do we have any breakdown of what grade level that is? Is it safe to assume that half of them or three-quarters of them will be going on to Hebrew and Literature next year?
No, this is just covering the current gap in which we have. Our hope is, and that's in my board connection, is we're starting to have that conversation for the fall of 2021, of if we are in the position of not feeling comfortable supporting the students with the six students that need that, then we need to also start having that conversation around, are we willing to be able to provide that course moving forward? Because as the program starts to shrink, as our enrollment starts to shrink, so it's a double-edged sword. I mean, we. I mean, we, we want to be able to offer a robust offering, but if we don't have enough students within that, we also can't have it as a graduation requirement. So you see, it's three, it's actually not a double-edged sword, it's actually three-pronged. It's, the board voted, I think, eight years ago to make A-3G as the graduation requirements. We're one of the few in the state of California that has that as a requirement to meet graduation. Most have one year of world language. Two, we also offer three world language programs for 1,200 kids. First is, when we were 6,000 kids, 6,000 students, we offered three world languages then as well. We haven't added or subtracted, except for, I think, we tried Mandarin for one or two years, and it wasn't very successful. And then, in addition, we still are also trying to work on, Mr. Spitz said, I hope our academic, our instructional offerings in academic programs are just as good as the branding, but we are wanting to work on college and career readiness, and we would be denying those students, even though it is a small population, of saying, hey, when they enrolled as freshmen, we offered this program, they take a placement exam, it is not my fault or anybody up here that they were better than what some of the other kids were. So when you have that intelligence level, and then to cut them off at the ankles, it's tough for me to swallow.
So I think that, I'm hearing some undertones here, that the A-3G requirements may be tripping us up in this foreign language aspect. But I would like to say that if we looked at the schools that our students are attending, that are applying to college and getting in, I would say that it's a fair bet that most of them would require at least two years of foreign language to get into the schools. So even though we can say that, well, it would be easier on us if we didn't have the two years, the truth is, they're going to need the two years. So, and I think with that, then, it takes the conversation in the other direction, is what, what are we prepared to offer for students to fulfill those two years? And we've wound up now with this program boxing ourselves into a corner, and we have to figure out, the board will have to make that decision at another time, that's not the item on the floor, but that in the future, we don't, we don't want to put ourselves in that position. We are going to take care of the kids that are here, but we're not going to let it happen again. And I think that's, that's, would be the discussion to have at another time, when this, because I think we can look at other programming at the same moment. Ms. Hacker, you had something else? Okay, sorry. All right, so let me call to question on this item?
But I would say, just one thing, just, can I ask one more thing? I just think that we should get a handle on what programs you're offering through this ILC, or this is independent, or what is this? How is this being, how is this class being taught?
No, it's, it's, it's an actual independent study course on campus, so they're actually meeting directly with their instructor, and it's an actual full-on class, and it's novel based, so it's Hebrew and Literature. It's just a typo on the form.
Steven, why are you calling?
It shouldn't have been labeled ILC.
So it's independent study?
It's just an independent study course.
It's a class.
It's a class, correct.
Then it's not ILC.
No, it's not ILC. It is not ILC, the ILC staff is not involved, the students aren't going across the street, they are meeting directly here on campus with their instructor. It shouldn't have been labeled that on the form. And it wasn't labeled that previously on the 15th.
Why all of a sudden, the, why? Why all of a sudden, was it in October of the 15th at the board meeting, that it was raised from 100 to 120% on that one for this Hebrew class? And now it's come back, and it's, why the change in that? That's, that's the only thing I didn't understand. Why did you change it? I thought we voted on that already.
You did. So actually, it was already voted on October 15th, the dates were incorrect, HR reposted it, and then, I don't know how it got added to Independent Learning Center, and then it got brought up again. So it was posted on October 15th, the dates were incorrect, they reposted it, and then we're having this discussion.
Yeah, so with more reason, I was just going to suggest that we have a, I really would like to see a study session on ILC and independent study, just so that the board is well informed as to how many courses are being offered through these two venues, and especially as we begin to plan for next year, to understand what the numbers are, the costs, and what you're projecting, what else you're proposing for next year, because we really never had a discussion about, here's what we plan to do. It's kind of been pieces by pieces coming through, and it's kind of difficult to, to see. I remember we had a discussion...
I did a presentation on April 23rd of last year, and presented the idea of combining Moreno and independent study, nothing's changed. These two programs have been in BHUSD for multiple years. What I did do, though, is by combining, actually had a reduction in FTE, and was able to provide more support for individualized students and prevent chronic absenteeism at the high school. The program doesn't cost any additional per course it's offered, because it is an online component, so we're actually just paying per seat, per student, that actually takes advantage of it. And they can take up to 20 classes at a seat. There's no limit to the number of classes the students have access to. And right now, we are sitting at 33 students that have access to the program.
ILC, two ILC, not the other one.
Yep, not, and at this time, we do not have any students that are currently enrolled in our Moreno continuation school. One of the reasons behind that, and I'm going to reiterate, is the fact that we had identified that we were also placing some of our students into Moreno that had the cognitive ability to receive a BHHS diploma, they just might have had either attendance issues or medical issues that were preventing them from attending every day. And so during that analysis over the last two years, we were able to find a really great fit for these kids, and they've been really successful so far.
These are not...
Nope.
The span, the Hebrew is not?
No, nope, the Hebrew...
That's why it's, that's why it would be just a little...
It was a typo on the...
On the answer, okay.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Call to question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Item passes, thank you. The last one I polled was 10J, which I am not going to make a motion on for discussion. It's cafeteria consult, nope. I is the vending machines, J is the consultant.
10I, approval of the professional services, Emmanuel Valero.
Nope.
That wasn't the one?
10J, not I.
Oh, 10J. Deborah, approved to renew the professional services agreement for Deborah Amos.
My second.
Okay. Thank you. I polled it. And what I would like to ask Mr. Roach, I believe, this is under food services under your office? Okay. This predates you. There were two previous contracts with these services. One was voted on in 2015, one was voted on 2018. What I would like to know before I approve something like this, is I would like to have a report on food services. I'd like to know how this consultant is being utilized, because from what I hear, it is we are not where we want to be yet in the food services department, as far as our finances, and it would be who of us to find that out before we actually spend more money into that department, especially since one of the job descriptions is finding ways to save money in the program. And I'd like to know if the person has actually even saved the amount of money that we're spending on them, because that doesn't make any sense to me. So, and it would be up to, at this point, up to, if approved tonight, it'd be $49,000, and that's a good chunk of change, so I'd like to, I would like to either table this or not support it, but I'd like to get an update from food services onto the, onto the role this person is playing in that department, so...
I would support that, Mr. Merga.
Okay.
Okay. I would support it. So...
So...
Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I mean, I support what you said.
Okay, okay. It looks like I'm twisting his arm when I'm at the table or something. I'll support David. Okay, all right, so whoever made the motion has to withdraw the motion.
I will withdraw the mo, I move to withdraw the motion to approve the item.
I withdraw my second.
Okay, thank you very much. Dr. Bergy, I'd like to have a food services update before we bring this back, okay?
Great.
Thank you. Okay, if that does...
Motion's taken.
Um, I guess we could, yeah, I'm sure, so you have it officially. Sure, I'll make a motion to table this item.
Check, good.
10J. Okay, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, opposed? No, good. There you go. Moving on, that's superintendent's report. Thank you, Dr. Bergy. Thank you, colleagues.
So also, just congratulations to our Science Fair winners. What an extraordinary evening. It was great to see the people that were given such awards. The fall play is coming up, and, you know, this did not happen without monumental things happening. And so I want to give a shout out to the flexibility in so, so many people, the administration here, Kaz Chandler, the director, also our students that are having to find a new home, and having to find new struggles with, you know, a new location, a new stage, a new sound system, a new lighting system, and also the Horst Mann administration, who have been very welcoming and trying to do all the things that we would normally do and take for granted here with an auditorium in a remote place. So I want to thank Mr. Bugby, the principal, Mr. Regan, and Mrs. Jung also for their hospitality and their ongoing communication and kind of troubleshooting. But that play is this weekend, so I'm super excited to attend that this week. Shout out, we've got a really good relationship with NBC News, and so, as you know, they reached out to us, and they wanted to talk to our middle school students and get a teenage authentic conversation started about vaping. There are also board members that have requested some additional information on vaping and some data, and we're working on providing that information as soon as possible as a follow-up. But that was a good springboard for us to start having that conversation with our own staff and students. We talked about the, the mottos at all of our schools, which was another huge leap in the right direction, as far as symbolizing the legacy that each school holds in our school district. Would also like to just acknowledge that at Beverly Vista Middle School, that having a first-time athletic program, first year, that we have our eighth grade, seventh grade boys moving into the playoffs for our flag football, and then also our eighth grade girls for volleyball. And to be first timers in this area, and then to move on to playoffs, is astounding. And so that doesn't happen with, without really good teachers and coaches, so I want to thank everybody for their efforts. And lastly, you know, we're often asked, you know, we're a complex organization, and so sometimes when parents and community members are asking questions, they're not really sure who to go to. And so we have developed something that I want to just bring back to your attention, we're going to keep referring to it, so that we can get everybody on the same page, but we had sent out a little diagram here on who do I ask? And so this does a really good job of being consistent. What we've learned over the course of the years is that keeping the problem, or the question, or the issue closest to the classroom is the place where you will find a faster solution. And so we have referred to this, we will continue to refer to this, because this actually works in practice. So we've sent that out, and so we'll continue to send that out, it's on our website, but it really does provide kind of a flow chart, if you will, of, you know, who do I, who do I talk to? And if I don't find resolution, who's next? And so it does a really nice job of kind of just outlining for, for just about anybody where to go, where to start, and then if you're not satisfied, where to move on. So you'll be seeing a lot of this. Thank you.
Thank you. And I specifically remember when I took the helm last year, I discussed this in my speech, so it's nice to see an actual visual to my thoughts. Moving on to Mr. Cooper.
All right, so with the conclusion of fall sports last week, winter sports are officially in full swing from middle school to high school. It is a great time commitment to be a student athlete, so I wanted to congratulate all students who completed a fall sport, and encourage all students to continue or begin to participate in a sport. Also, congratulations to all those who participated in the Science Fair, and to those who won. All the students had very interesting inquiries. Many students investigated very time-sensitive matters, so it was very inspiring to see that the students are applying their knowledge. In addition, I have one comment regarding graduation requirements from the last board meeting. I thought that the best way to incorporate the community service into the curriculum is for students to collaboratively work on a community service project beginning when they enter high school, or freshman year. This can build a community for each grade level, and will also allow students to get back to the community. This will be a graduation requirement, but it will be, but it will be a project with a certain hour requirement rather than a class, so... That's my comment about...
Excellent. Done, all in favor? Great, okay. Anything else?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. I love it. Kind of love government. Okay. Turn it over to the Ed Services Update Show. We all have a copy in front of us, colleagues, of the...
Awesome. I'm going to be super short, quick, and sweet.
Kind of a dull, black-and-white copy, I gotta say.
Yeah, I know.
Me, come on, come on. Look at the way it's passing out tonight.
I know. So what I wanted to do is just be able to, one, we have a Career Technical Education Advisory Committee that's coming up. Also, we have some deadlines that we want to try to meet around submitting some grants and applications for some funding. Each and every year, we try to highlight just kind of what we're doing within that career technical education. I think one of the things that I do want to stress the most is this area has increased and evolved significantly across the state of California over in just the last couple of years. I had the opportunity on Wednesday, I was in San Francisco, and I am able to sit on the Career Technical Education Advisory Board for the state of California. Through those meetings, we have been able to see just the evolution from ROP to CTE, but also just the renaming and reclassification of some of the courses that people had, have always offered and never really identified as career technical education, because it's really creating courses that are aligned with a post-secondary option, or aligned with a career for them to be able to follow. So just as an FYI, and I'm going to blow through this, there are 16 national recognized career clusters. Right now, at BHUSD, we offer six of those pathways, and four of the six that we offer at BHHS, four of them are already identified or represented in the middle school. So right now, out of the 16 national career clusters, we do have four that float from sixth grade to 12th grade, and we have six that float from ninth to 12th grade, providing students. Those are the bolded career clusters that we currently offer, so, and I'm going to kind of fly through. So we offer architecture, you'll see that we even offer the possible connection with the West LA courses. We offer a ton of art, audio/video technology and communications. You'll also notice that at the top of each of these slides, I kind of give you a general idea of where we are funding these courses out of. So as Mr. Hacker brought up earlier, these are the conversations that we're going to want to have to continue as we move into that 2021 school year, of what are some of the courses that will be offered here at BHHS, but then just BHUSD altogether. And the asterisks at the end of each of the titles means that those are courses that are represented sixth through 12th grade. So I'm going to use an example of animation, is by doing, by reconfiguration, we're able to offer now animation, now 612, versus before animation was just a high school course. I'm going to jump to business, and I'm going to actually elaborate on one of those. Last board meeting, one of the conversations and directions from the Board of Education was to bring back possible ideas, or maybe an option, of adding a financial literacy as a graduation requirement. And you'll notice, one of the things that I mentioned is that we do offer kind of the intro finance, personal and business, both 612. So sixth graders coming in, all the way to 12th grade have the opportunity, right now, as an elective course, to take those. I'm going to jump in, we have health sciences as well, the Medical Science Academy, physiology, biotechnology. Not all the courses are listed, I just wanted to provide you with examples of where these clusters and pathways fall within BHUSD. You'll even notice, such as the hospitality and tourism, we even find creative ways here at BHUSD to offer students exposure through middle school gate programming in those West LA college courses. So let me continue to go on. One of the things that I do want to highlight is how do One of the things that I do want to highlight is how do we pay for a lot of this? And so the majority of, and actually, all of the ones that are labeled CTE funding come from a variation of five sources. So Mrs. Tross is gone, and I wish she was here because President Tross. BHGF is one of the significant donators to our career technical education program. We do have the CTIG, the K-12 Perkins, and then we do have a lot of business and private donations. And that's a financial amount that I'm going to have to be able to give you more of a clear at the end of 2019, 2020. We have a lot of opportunities where they make donations to specific programs, such as a call area arts or KBEF program is a great example of a CTE course. So this is where the 2019, 2020 funding is coming from, to be able to support those that are CTE-funded. And what we hope to do is we hope to increase, because we always shoot for the moon, but that doesn't mean we get it. So an example is, for CTIG, we are shooting for $300,000 in funding, from federal funding. Last year, we ended up with 125. So again, that's just that financial balance of what can we actually qualify for, what can we cover or compensate for the shortcomings in general fund, and then what can we not offer? What can we offer as a club or as an enrichment activity versus an actual class? So those are the ones that we're actually applying for in the month of November. The CTIG, like I stated, we're looking for 300,000. One of the differences in this application than previous applications, and I want to highlight that, is we're looking at additional support within the College and Career Center. So that was one of the things that Ms. Rowley, the college counselor, had addressed in her presentation at the beginning of the school year. We are looking at, hopefully, by earning through our narratives, our wonderful, powerful narratives that Ms. Stuber has worked on, Angelique, Mr. Roach, myself, we're hoping that we will be able to be awarded most. Last year, I think the state average was 80% of the actual dollar amounts were awarded to most school districts. Again, we're basic aid that does play into that, though. So we do have counterparts that get, you know, almost a million bucks out of some of these applications. Again, these programs serve over 400 kids, students alone, just at the high school that are selecting some of these as elective options to be able to explore. But I do want to come back to one of the original questions that had happened last week is just around the financial literacy and whether or not we, as you as a Board of Education, but we as BHUSD want to possibly offer financial or require financial literacy as a graduation requirement. And I just want to highlight to everybody in the community, the way that we kind of read that definition of financial literacy is the possession of the set of skills and knowledge that allows an individual to make informed and effective decisions with all their financial resources. What I want to highlight the most is as I did more and more research, it really is covering the five basics, which is the checking, savings, borrowing, investing, and budgeting. The great part is, is we have two really strong instructors across BHUSD that currently deliver those five topics within a middle school elective course and a high school elective course. We do have probably about 60 students take the high school course each year as an elective, trying to pursue probably post-secondary option in business. But we had 127 middle school students elect to take the course over four semesters, meaning two semesters, two classes in the fall, two classes in the spring in the middle school. So we do know that there is a large number of students that are interested. I think that we, as a Board of Education and as an administration, always side on that it should be student-interest-driven when we are being able to provide opportunities such as electives to our students, that we do, like Ms. Marcus had stated, we want to be leery of running programs that aren't full, right? We want to run robust and full programs that can continue on through years. And so we do know that at this time, we do have 127 students in BBMS, and then I think just shy, it's 59 students probably at BHHS. When asked about the requirement, I do want to bring to the board's attention that one of the things that we would have to look at is the changes to the board policy and administrative regulations of the 6146, which we talked about on May 14 of 2019 when we did. We did amend those to be able to look at offering and allowing additional opportunities for correspondence or online courses for students to explore. But if we were looking for that requirement for 2020, I think from Ed Services, one of the things that I would present to you is how would the students be able to tackle this? Would be, one, either maybe taking the intro to finance, personal and business at BHHS. Two, could they also be, take the consumer finance and advanced, meaning two courses then at the middle school? Or taking a proficiency exam that we ensure was written and consulted that covered the following topics of the checking, savings, borrowing, investing, and budgeting. And so those would be the three options that I would propose as an Ed Services lead that you would consider if we did go down the, did go vote and required financial literacy as a graduation requirement. And that was the fastest presentation I've provided you ever.
Thank you, Dustin. Colleagues?
Thank you so much. I noticed that on the back page, we have two additional pathways that we're planning on adding for next school year, right?
Correct. Sorry. Yes. So there are two that are being implemented this school year. So we have right now a fashion merchandising course that, again, when we were talking about funding and being able to determine whether it would be an after-school opportunity or an actual class offer during the school day, we are looking at offering a gaming club, actually utilizing some of our career technical education funding to be able to support an after-school activity for gaming and then fashion and merchandising. And that's a really exciting one, is we are able to partner with SMC, so I think you Miss Stuber, and she is a wonder. But she was able to secure, to work with SMC, to have students take three classes on SMC's campus in their fashion merchandising wing. They actually have even a museum with some Oscar dresses and stuff. It's really cool. And then one is actually on fashion merchandising within Saks, and then there's a small class on window displays and just the whole marketing merchandising on counter displays as well. So we're hoping to start marketing that and launching it January into February. So those would be the two additional that we're covered with in this current funding strand. Again, depending on how many students we get involved and how robust the program is, is then whether or not I can come back to the board in 2020, 21 to say, now we've had 60 kids wanting this course, can we run two sections of it during the day?
Tipping their toe in the water. Okay, Mr. Spitz. Oh, you're done? I'm sorry.
And then also regarding the financial literacy course, I just advise that we make that change before freshman open house in January, because they get all their requirements and what they have to complete.
Agreed. Thank you, Tom.
Well, there's a huge amount of data here that you covered pretty quickly. But I want to say that when I look at the goal of expanding our pathways, the post-secondary options, this is very exciting. This is really, really exciting to me. And so I'm fully supportive, and I'm going to look forward to studying this.
This is tremendous. I'm really excited to see all of the additional offerings. Appreciate your brevity. Sometimes we don't get a lot of that. I do want to mention one thing, and this is just because, this is just because I talked about this during the campaign, and it's, you know, it's my business experience, and it really nicely coordinates, actually, with Dr. Bregge and Mrs. Starkin's presentation. So when we're developing assets that we use for the purposes of branding, and we're talking about the use in apparel, not just for our teams, but also as an actual source of revenue, looking at this page where you say, "goal to expand our pathways for post-secondary options," there are, one, two, three, there are three at least that hit the manufacturing, marketing, sales, and service, and transportation, distribution, and logistics. If we were to develop an actual apparel line and make that as a CTE offer for students to bring in, to the full, our graphic design students, to teach them how to actually manufacture, how to source, what first quality, you know, checks look like, and then talk about logistics and distribution, which we could do here as well. And that is a tremendous offering to give our students as they're leaving Beverly Hills High School, particularly given that we live in Los Angeles, which is one of the hubs of manufacturing domestically. So there's a lot of opportunities here. And then it also ties in with the fashion merchandising. So I would love, you've got so much here, and I don't mean to add more to your plate, but I would love to see, as we're moving forward, even if it's not 2020, 21, you know, into the future, bringing that as an option for students to engage and really learn what that looks like and be able to hit those different areas. Thanks.
Well, first of all, if you can do that, we don't need these other companies. We can make our own money, and, you know, we won't need anybody else, so we can make money for ourselves. First of all, I just want to echo Mr. Spitz's comments. They were right on. I hope that when we offer all these, that we can fill these classes, so that that's the main thing that would be one of my concerns. I think by presenting what's in them and so on, I think the kids will be excited, just like what's happened at the middle school with the financial class that we offered. It really went over very big. And I think that that's something, it's the way we program it and the way we show it what it'll be, and I think it, I love that idea. And I guess the main thing is that all of these things can provide students with something to do if they don't go on to college, and this is something that I think that we've been missing. And I really like this, so that our kids are prepared for not going to college, even though I'd like them to go to college, we have a lot of kids that don't go to college, so.
Mrs. Hager.
No, I think this is very exciting. I think it's, I think it's great. And I think, especially because of the high school, I think it really gives some effort and attention to the high school, which so many people say we haven't really focused on. So it's really amazing, and I think it's great that we have the middle school now because there's a way, a path for continuation. The only thing that I was going to suggest, and I don't know if you thought about this, one of the things that a lot of the private school parents say to me that are in, that are looking to come back into the district at some point, say that we don't have information about our specialized programs very easily accessible, so we have to go ask for that. And as I was listening to Dr. Bregge and Mrs. Starkin give their presentation on, you know, booklets, brochures, and advertising efforts, I'd like to see that tied in to, you know, these programs, so that we are marketing ourselves in that way, and so that if someone has, and I know that you've already started to do, like the high school, if you look for it, it's there. It's all there. But, you know, people really do like walking into an office and seeing stacks of.
And we are working on all of that. It's so exciting.
Yeah.
But it is, we are absolutely working on those items, so that whether somebody walks into the district office or into the high school, that you are able to have everything from a profile to something a little bit more, you know, kind of like what colleges are doing.
And the private schools do that. Exactly. So thank you for this. Very exciting.
Thank you. You know I'm a big fan of spending time on Ed Services in public, so I appreciate this. Going to the financial literacy thing, and I hope we can bring this, the BPAR back with this change and work on it pronto. The finance, personal, and business class that's currently taught, is that a year-long class or a semester class?
Yeah, it is, we moved from, it was semester-long for 2018, 2019. We moved to a full year because it was aligned with Business 45 at SMC, it was dual credit. Unfortunately, but fortunately, the Business 45 class now meets the math requirement for UC post-secondary. So SMC pulled, so after this year, when we did the dual enrollment articulation, next year, unfortunately, the students that enroll in the course won't get the Business 45 transcripted credit at the university level. So that would be up to discussion of moving either back to a semesterized or continuing as a year-long.
I just, because, to achieve the goal of how we define financial literacy, or how your office has defined financial literacy, we don't need a year-long course. That's what I want to avoid. I want to make sure if we do offer it, it can be handled, and even if it's in the first semester of that intro to finance, personal, and business, I think however we work it, it should not be a year-long course. You don't need to cover that. Now, if you were going to get into studying the stock market and real estate and all those things, yeah, sure, you can spend more time on that, but I don't know if that's, those could be brushed upon. I don't think they need to be part of the longer discussion. For number three, when it says, "take a proficiency exam at the high school that covers checking, saving, borrowing, investing, and budgeting," investing is really important. That's, that opens up a whole gamut when you talk about real estate and the stock market, things like that. And I think that those are really important for kids to understand their place, you know, how they exist within the world, how one affects the other, how markets affect real estate prices, things like that. But I don't think we need to, like I said, I'd like to just brush upon the main points to make sure that when they graduate, they have an understanding of what goes out, and they don't go to that table on their first day of orientation at college that Visa has out, passing out T-shirts and saying, "sign up for a credit card, get a free T-shirt, because I didn't pack enough T-shirts when I moved to college." So that's, I think, the goal here, is that they know, they know that that's a trick. You know, if our kids know that that's a trick, I think they understand it a lot better. So I'd love to see this come back as soon as we can and get this moving, because I would like, they said down there, if it's going to be for the incoming freshmen, we should have a long before orientation.
How about, Dustin, have you considered maybe also offering an option, maybe for students to take a class if they wished on financial literacy, like with West LA or just Santa Monica on their own? Because I know that they, they're semester-based courses.
Yeah. And I think online, too.
Online or some, even some of the.
If it's acceptable.
I mean, I don't know what you're looking at as far as, you know, curriculum, you'd have to look at that. You'd be the one who would see that, you know, and make sure that those, that detail is consumed by these classes. But I think that would be a good alternative to offer. Have you thought about that?
Yeah, no, I have not yet. And so it's good, because my primary focus was just those five themes. When I was looking at other states and other districts that had required financial literacy as a graduation requirement, I wanted to make sure that those five themes were definitely touched upon in some variation. And then I went down a rabbit hole on the proficiency exam. I started to feel like I was writing it, and I was like, wait, they're not there yet. So, but I definitely, I'll cross that.
I just want to make it as flexible as possible for students.
Yep.
You know, even like some of the financial institutions offer weekends, like a few Saturdays, where they actually go over a few topics that they believe consumers should know. And so I would be okay if students went and said, "Mango America" on a Saturday, and, you know, where they're getting, you know, how to start a checking account, how to balance your checking book, or whatever. I mean, that would, that would be enough.
Yeah, as well, for me, though, as long as they could pass the proficiency exam based on what they learn at those seminars, I think, I think we have to have a standard. We can't control what a private institution does at a seminar.
Well, no, but definitely.
So, and they may give them some of the information. That's why I think a proficiency exam is the best.
They might want to even partner with us.
Yeah. I mean, I also think that, like, we're making it similar to, like, driver's ed almost. Like, you can take, you can go for three or four Saturdays for four hours and knock it out and learn and pass the.
But you still have to take the state test.
But you still have to take the test and pass it.
Yeah, that's fine with me. Like I said, however they pass it and show us they understand it, I'm good.
Yeah.
Doesn't have to be a class.
Right.
Just has to be an understanding. So, okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Good stuff. Moving along to the budget update. I have some stacks here I'm going to pass down to everybody.
Human Resources.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. Okay, Human Resources.
Move Approval Agreement for Employment of Interim Executive Director of Technology.
I'll second. I already seconded. Any questions on this?
Questions.
No? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Email is safe. Moving on to business and finance. Budget update here. Does anybody want some debriefs?
So, Mr. President, members of board, we have a very, very quick presentation for you tonight.
Those are lies.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was kidding.
I need to be quicker than Dustin. So we are one-third of the way through the fiscal year, and we wanted to bring to the board and the community just an update on our budget and any changes since budget adoption back in June. So things happen over the summer and the beginning of the school year, mostly around staffing, as we get our staffing settled for the new school year. And also, we have carryover from restricted funds from the prior year. One thing that we all need to remember, though, as we look at the budget, that this is a new baseline. new baseline budget for Beverly Hills Unified School District based on a new reconfiguration. In any other district, what I would be showing you tonight would be a comparison between this year's expenditures and last year's expenditures, but that doesn't make as much sense now, since we are reconfigured, we have new programs. So this really becomes the baseline as we move forward. So in a nutshell, if you want to go to sleep after this slide, that's great, I'm going to tell you what's going to happen. Our revenue is up in the general fund. Our expenditures are up in the general fund. But our revenue has increased at a higher rate than our expenditures. So our adopted budget had a deficit of 2.3 million in the general fund, but as we stand right now, it's reduced to $1.4 million. All right. So for everyone's understanding, our general fund revenues, as you all know, of the $74 million or so, majority of that, $56 million, comes from our local property taxes, 15.6 million comes from other local funds, including the JPA, and we get a smidgen of other state funds and federal funds. How do we expend those dollars? Of course, as you all know, they go towards salary and benefits. Salary and benefits for our district are about 85% of our general fund. And the remainder, of course, is our supplies and services. If you take out utilities and you take out insurance, we have less than 10% of our budget for actual school supplies, instructional materials, things of that nature. So it's very telling that most of it's staffing, and after you take out utilities and insurance and things to keep the doors open, we have less than 10% to operate our schools. Of our, of our general fund salaries, of course, about 67% of those are for our certificated staff, and the rest for classified and administrative staff. So when we look at staffing, this is where we are right now. If you look at this column, you have total unrestricted general fund FTEs, total restricted general fund FTEs, and then you broke out just for our teaching staff down below. So you'll see, in total, in June, we had 444.14 general fund FTEs. In October, we're down to 415, so we're reduced by over 28 FTEs in the, in the current year, and I think this is what you plan during reconfiguration. When you look at teachers, we had 216.63 unrestricted general fund FTEs for teachers. Right now, in October, we're down to 197.42. Of that 197.42, 170 of those are actually in front of students on a daily basis that are classroom-based. And you can see our special ed below that, and you see the totals. So of the 28.30 reduction in FTE in total, 23.91 of those are teacher FTEs. Does that make sense? So we do have other things other than salaries. We have overtime, we have sub-costs, things like that. So we broke that out into the classified budget and the certificated budget. You can see there, for the classified budget, we have a little over $1 million budgeted. We've expended about $300,000 for the year at 27%. Remember, we're one-third of the way through the year, so if it was much above 33%, we would have a few concerns. Certificated, hourly, daily, overtime, one, a little over $1 million in the budget, we've expended $284,000, so it's about the same as classified. Substitutes, classified, we have 105,000 budgeted, not very much, and we've expended $80,000. So that's something we have to keep our eye on. Certificated subs, we budgeted 600,000, we've spent 114,000, so only about 20%. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So when we look at this slide, we need to keep an eye on substitutes at the classified level. Okay? Okay, this is just a pictorial of where we are. The adopted budget revenue is in pink.
Mr. Roach, can I just jump in, before we go back?
Most certainly.
So we have.
Do you want me to go back?
Yes, please. Before, just, I think it's easier to address it while we're here.
Most certainly.
If you don't mind.
No.
So for that, for that 76% on the classified illness substitute, that's something that I think my colleagues would agree with me, that we have to maybe get on top of that. It's nice to have it reported to us, but that's, that's something that's, I don't know if that's, that's a problem. Okay?
Right.
So I just didn't want that to go by without saying, with my colleagues' consent, I'd like to direct staff to look at that and see if there's possible ways that we can change that in the future. I know you can't control people's illnesses, I completely understand and respect that, but is there, why is it happening in that particular department? Because I think the other one, the certificated illnesses, seems very much on track with our, and even maybe below what we're projecting, they're at the rate it's going. So we're, you know, we're wrapping up the first semester here, and we're only at 19%. I assume that if we keep that under 50%, both semesters, you're going to come in under budget on that. So I don't see that happening in the other round. Could you want to?
I, I do think it would be an interesting, you know, take a deeper dive, because there's, you know, whether it's PD or illness, two totally separate things. So it would be, it would be interesting to break that down a little bit and just to see, you know, where were we last year at this time, just for some comparative data.
And also, what, where? Is it the middle school, elementary, or, or the high school?
Okay.
And around what time of the year, also?
And one more question. Were there no stipend in our factors in the previous year?
So, classified?
No, they don't get our factors. Okay, thank, thank you.
Okay, no problem. So this just shows the revenue and expenditures going up as of October. This just shows that the projected deficit has gone down as of October. This is a little bit harder to read, but what you have here is the October 1920 budget revenue expenditures showing the deficit of 1.4 million. I'm sorry, it's hard to read in red there, with the current projected reserve of about 23%. If we just carry those figures forward into 2021 and 2122, you'll see that we also have deficits projected in those two out years, which bring the reserve below 20%, which is an issue I'll get into in just a second.
But that, that one in 2122, the last projected deficit?
Right.
We, in my time here, I've never seen a projected deficit under $1 million in a year. So that's very encouraging to see, and I know it's the reason we, one of the reasons we consider the reconfiguration anyway, because we were running inefficiently. But that's a refreshing number to see.
Okay. So we broke this down, looking at the 4,000s and 5,000s. Just remember again that this is less than 10% of our general fund operating budget. So I just broke it down by department, just to see how the departments are doing. So you'll see your department, like the superintendent, I'm not going to pick on Dr. Bregge, but yes, I am. He has a budget of 121,000. He's spent 56,000. He's at 46%. But if you look at his services, he's only spent 36,000, so he's only at 17%. So that's kind of how you read this chart as you go down. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not going to spend much time on that. And then also, I did the same breakdown for our schools. So you see Beverly Hills High, the middle school, the elementary schools. And I was like, what's going on with El Rodeo? We shouldn't have any expenses there. But yes, we still have utilities there. So your utility costs are still budgeted at El Rodeo, unless Jeff wants to pick those up for me. But yeah, so that's what's going on at El Rodeo. So you can see there how we've expended. At, just a note, at elementary, I mean, at all schools, you're likely to see the percentage higher at this time of year because you front-load your purchases, because you need to buy your materials. You need to buy everything for the school year. So I'm not concerned at all seeing 44% at Horace Mann, because they need to purchase their stuff, they need to run their school. So that doesn't bother me at all. And then we, when we look at the restricted budget, which is special ed and restricted maintenance and food services, you can see here, special ed is about 37% of their supply budget, 23% of their, their services budget, restricted maintenance, about 36%, 17% of their services budget, and food services, 30% and 25%.
So, Mr. Roach, are there expenditures in these departments that you know of coming up that are going to throw these numbers off whack? Because a lot of these percentages are encouraging, actually, to where we are in the year.
Right.
But are there things we don't know of, oh, yeah, but in January, we're going to get hit with, this department is going to have, you know, that kind of thing?
Not that I know of right now. I mean, we continue to poll our side administrators to make sure that we're not, not, no, missing something that's going to come up. But right now, we have fairly high confidence in these numbers, and that we're on track with our current year expenditures.
Okay.
Quick question right here.
Yes, sir.
We're still waiting, as I understand it, to get a report on, on deferred maintenance.
Correct.
And, and that issue is not reflected in here.
No, you are correct.
So, just to get kind of a peek, do you have any idea how soon we're going to get some information that we can look at? Because my understanding is that that's going to result in putting down our reserves.
Yes, our, our goal is to bring that report to the board before we bring the first interim in December. So it may be at that same meeting, December 17th, but it'll be there for the board to have before they see the first interim report. So before winter break is our goal.
I was looking, when we were talking, going back to the general fund multi-year projections, and the fact that we are projecting at the end of the year about a $1.5 million, one and a half million for this year, and next year it's $3 million almost. My question is, what do you think is, caused that to double in the, between this year and next year, the projections? As I see it, we're going to be double the amount. What, Mike, do you think caused that?
So we, we've not made any adjustments based on the adjustments we've made in 1920. So we're going to have to make our adjustments to 2021 based on those adjustments that we've made in the current year. So those have not been done. In general, our pension costs continue to rise, so we've, that's a big portion of this. And then we have one final year of salary increase based on our negotiated agreement.
That would be next year, right?
Yes, that is the final year.
That 21 year?
Correct. Those two things are the biggest drivers of our budget. So I told you I was be faster than Dustin. So here, here is our goals. We want to maintain the board reserve of 20%. That's stated in your board policy. And as we develop the budget moving forward and our multi-year projections, that, that is our fiscal goal. We need to create a fiscal stabilization plan for LACO. Because we show deficit spending, they would like to see a fiscal stabilization plan, how we're going to address that, even though we have reserves over 20%. So the request to the board will be in a different venue to have a study session or have an item that we discuss about the fiscal stabilization plan, and what does that look like as we develop the budget for next year. We'd like to, I've heard it addressed some tonight, about adhering to current contractual staffing levels. If, if our contractual staffing level is 145 contacts, how do we run a successful program and get closer to that contractual staffing level? In that same vein, as our teachers, the number of teachers we have is driven by the number of students we have, and that's, and that drives how we staff. But in our district, we don't have similar staffing ratios for our non-classroom-based employees. So, for example, we've been talking a lot about how many playground aides do we need? We don't have a staffing ratio for that. How many custodians do we need? How many, that should be based on how many bathrooms we have, which is based on how many students we have. How many library aides do we have? How many, how many clerical staff do we have? All of those things in other districts are based on the number of students in a school. So we probably want to look at that as a district, and it may be a process over a year or two to get to a point where we have staffing ratios, but that would be a goal of staff, is to get to that point, where it's not just the teachers that are driven by enrollment, but other types of employees. The number of staff is driven by the enrollment of the students. And then finally, dear, near and dear to my heart, identify and secure new revenue sources for the district, whatever that looks like, whether it be tax revenue, whether it be with a parcel or sales tax, or donations or gifts, whatever that looks like, we need to, you know, how do we use our assets and our real property? Whatever that looks like, we need to focus as much on revenue as we do on reducing expenses. And that's it.
Wonderful colleagues.
Thank you.
Um, thank you. I'm not taking financial literacy, but I did understand it pretty well. I just do have a quick question. I understand that the projected operational loss this year was supposed to be greater than the actual, like the 1.4. So then why, why is next year's like 2.9, or is it greater than this year's projected?
See if he didn't.
We're going to have an increased cost related to pension costs for our employees, and we have one more year of salary increases for our employees for next year.
Contract.
I just have one more question. When we decide to purchase the one-to-one laptops, where will the purchase of that go? What?
So the purchase of the one-to-one laptops comes out of bond funds?
Okay.
General obligation bond funds.
Thank you.
Mr. Spitz.
Yeah. My comment is this. Mr. Roach came to this district, and he hit the ground running. And I'm, I think, I think it's been outstanding and better than anything I could have imagined. And I want to congratulate you.
Ms. Walker Sherman?
I concur. I think this is an incredibly concise presentation, very easy to digest, incredibly thorough. So I thank you.
Ms. Marcus?
Again, I just, I don't want to make lengthy, I just wanted to let you know that of all, whenever I hear your presentation on budget and what have you, it has been so easy to digest and understand that it's just unbelievable that it, you make it seem so simple, yet I know how complicated it is. You make it easy for me to be on top of it, and I thank you.
I think I told you recently that every time people bring finances recently up to me, they are always so complimentary to you, Mr. Roach. And I want to say that just today, I had a person approach me outside of City Hall, letting me know how impressed they are with your presentations at the Finance Committee. So I'm not sure what you're doing at the Finance Committee, because I'm not there, but it's been repeated back to me that you're very thorough, and they're very happy to have you onboard. And what I most appreciate is just your consideration for always letting us know what is going on before we even ask. So for me, that is incredibly helpful, and it's just so thorough, and I appreciate that so much. Thank you.
Besides echoing my colleagues' comments, Mr. Roach, I'm looking at your, the budget and expenses for the year through October 25th. And I'm, I'm encouraged, by the way, does this include legals for those departments? Okay, so I'm encouraged, and so I'm even a little more encouraged, but I'm encouraged at, at the rate, at the spending rate in a lot of departments, and I would hope that that, either we budgeted very conservatively in these departments last year, or people are actually starting to be really mindful of the dollar. And I appreciate that, and I think that every department head that looks at this and sees where we are at at this point of the year, and I venture, I would try to guess what week we're at. I think we have about five more full weeks left in the semester, roughly, five, maybe? Is that about right? Five, three in December, three, yeah, three, six. So, yeah. So six full weeks. So we've, you know, chipped away at about almost three-quarters of our semester, and this is, this is encouraging. If, anything that affects the sites on this, right, we have a lot of people here tonight that can look at these departments, but as far as the sites are concerned, I think they should be made aware of where they are with the spending and, and kind of be a little bit handheld and say, look, you know, if at the end of the year, we haven't spent this money, that means we haven't spent down the reserve, which means we're not going to be, well, once again, not going to have that deficit spending, which is what happens every year. So just a, this is, this is the reason, looking at this, it's, what we don't spend is what keeps us from actually deficit spending as opposed to projected deficit spending. So I think that that's, that's a constant mantra, you know, kind of really only spend what you need, right? Just because it's in your department budget, doesn't mean you have to spend it. Not, not, and obviously not to the Not, and obviously not to the detriment of any students or academic programming, that's not what I'm referring to. I'm just saying overall, I like where this is headed, except for technology, we'll get a smack on the hand with a ruler, 73%. It's only October. Nonsense. Okay. Anything else, colleagues? Okay. So we appreciate that, and I know the interim is coming to us too, right? For, yeah, December. Okay. Great. Moving on to our favorite time of the evening, planning facilities, with your co-host Jeff Pylmann. Okay, can I get a motion?
I move approval of rental agreement with Sterling Venue Ventures for the Savant Theater for BHHS concerts.
I second the motion.
Thank you very much. And I understand, I did ask the department president in performing arts last week, they are already working on their 2020, 2021 dates to start securing stuff early, than much earlier than they did this year. So hopefully those will start coming in sooner before the new school year starts, we'll have everything approved and scheduled out. Any questions on that item? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 15B.
I move for the approval of the pool of construction materials testing and inspection services firms for various projects.
Can I second?
Thank you. Any questions on that? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, colleagues. Moving on to C.
I move removal of two members of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee for excessive absenteeism.
I second that motion.
Okay. Any questions?
She really meant it.
Can we, I don't know if we can apply that to excessive absenteeism in the classified department, obviously. Okay. Thank you for getting that. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We can link D, E, and F are all the same contract, just different projects, if we'd like to combine those?
I move approval of professional services agreement with Darren Dershow to provide IT and AV construction oversight services related to Elrodale School modernization, BHHS B1, B2 modernization, and BHHS B3, B4 modernization. I will second that.
And Elrodale, did you say Elrodale?
Did you say Elrodale? It was the first one.
Okay.
That's different.
Okay, so it's items, we're doing D, E, and F. Good. Okay, thank you very much. Any questions on these? Staff answered my questions on these, so I'm good. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I will move the ratification of Amendment Number Four to the agreement for asbestos and lead abatement monitoring services within the Environmental Audit Inc. at Elrodale School.
I second.
Mr. Pylmann, quick question, sorry. Is this?
What's so funny?
I don't know.
Okay.
This is, this was due to extended work and to discover during demolition and abatement process?
No, this amendment is a ratification for the soil management plan that we've asked Steve Bright at Environmental Audit to develop. This soil management plan will be one of the bidding documents used by Pro West in how they handle, manage, identify, and dispose of any soil on site that's deemed contaminated non-haz, like we have been doing on the high school campus. We have a couple of hotspots that have been identified on the Elrodale campus. We also have the land use covenant, which is the triangle that outlines the previously buried fuel tank that was on that Elrodale property. So this soil management plan basically outlines the do's and don'ts and the procedures and protocol for the contractors to follow, and also will harvest the information necessary for any DTSC reporting at the end of the job.
So I understand about the previous fuel tank area, I was not aware. Are we excavating in a different area that would require this?
We're excavating around the perimeter, not within the land use covenant. We have a 15-foot excavation limit, I believe, with that land use covenant.
And that's to form the foundation work?
Correct.
Okay.
So to basically encompass the entire site from a hazardous materials related to the soil handling protocol and agency reporting, this small plan that we're asking Environmental Audit to prepare, similar to that they did on the high school campus, to be a part of the bidding documents.
Okay. Thank you very much for the clarification. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Great, motion carries. Moving on to board policies, we have the second reading of the payment for goods and services.
Move approval of second reading of board policy 3314, payment of goods and services.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I move approval of second reading of new administrative regulation 3314.1, district-issued credit card use.
I will second that.
Any questions? Okay. Great, terrific. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you very much, once again, Mr. Roach, for getting these policies into the books. I wanted to have tighter control on spending. Finance committee guidelines. I think we were asked to review the finance committee. Oh, you stayed for this.
I thought I'd better.
We have, it seems that there's, there were a couple of questions, there was term, term amounts, term limits that colleagues wanted to bring up, and the appointments, because I think people are long, have sat on the committee way too long, and we need to get some, get it out there to have new appointments on the committee. So, did you want to add anything before we have discussion on this? Okay, thank you. Colleagues.
Do we have a list?
It's posted?
It was posted, but nothing to pass out. Yeah, I saw it, I just.
Okay. So it seems like right now, on the current committee, which consists of Marilyn, Bob, Colleen, Joe, and Elliot, we have at least one person that is long beyond their tenure, and...
I think there was a problem with the list, may I just say. Mr. Spitz, wasn't Jay Newman your appointment? I know that I agreed with you, but you were the president at the time. Wasn't Jay Newman your appointment?
He resigned.
He resigned, but I mean, that's incorrect, is what I'm saying. I think I approved...
Yes, Jay Newman was my appointment, however...
I appointed Elliot Finkel.
As you know, he resigned shortly after he was appointed because he was, because of traveling problems.
Right.
I didn't appoint him. Okay, great. Just wanted to clarify that, because they have my name.
So then the question would be then, who would get the next appointment? Is that, would that go back to you, Mr. Spitz, since your appointee? I'd love it to come back to me, frankly. Does anybody have an issue with that at this point? Okay, you two take this outside.
Well, maybe you can share it the way I share that.
Well, the only reason I don't have an issue with Mr. Spitz, I would suggest to him the person that I have in mind, and if he knows of this gentleman, which he does, I think he would find him very acceptable. But I don't know what he had in mind, and so I would turn to Mr. Spitz if he wants to hear my name. I would be happy to.
Well, it was, it was Mr. Spitz and Mr. Young at the time, when they were on the Finance Committee, that turned to me, when it was my time to appoint, to get Mr. Frank. And that was one of the best moves we did, so.
And the same thing happened to me.
At Mr. Young's recommendation.
Right.
Well, yours too. So you want to take credit for that, Mel, but you were there.
Okay.
Okay, so I think then we're going to have to get an appointment going, and then, does anybody have issues? The current policy is...
Well, I'm a little unclear about our conversation. We do need to, we do need to have another member on, because we have one member on who I think has been on...
Yes.
From the inception of the committee.
Yes, that's why I brought it up.
And so before we leave that, I'm wondering why, what Mrs. Marcus had in mind. Do you have an individual in mind? Is that it?
At any time, it's okay to pass notes in class. I'm for that.
You can appoint him. I've already asked him. No, I don't have, I mean, I asked him if he'd ever be interested.
He's indicated that he would.
He's already on there.
No, I'm just asking, on this list, it says Isabel Hacker and Mel Spitz under Elliot Finkel.
Mel's her name.
No, 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 it was blank. It was, Mel was blank.
Oh, Mel's is blank.
Mel's is blank, that's why.
Got you, got you.
So, and we do have to...
I hope you had somebody in mind.
No, this is, I had this individual and one other, this would be fine, so...
And then, and then let's note, while the wonderful Colleen is here, that she will term out next year, correct? According to this, you term out next spring.
I think that next year is my sixth year.
Yes, so then probably Mrs. Marcus, you would get the next appointee.
Do you want me to say, no, I won't say my person.
No, it's fine. Anyway, the question, the other question we had, colleagues, is that we had, at some point, we had changed for three terms, three two-year terms, so it's a total of six years. It used to be two two-year terms. Are we interested in reducing that back to two two-year terms or leaving it?
I think we should leave it.
Leave it.
Leave it.
Really? I disagree. I think it should be two, two terms.
Okay. Kristen?
It's not easy, it's not the easiest thing in the world to find people, and...
Okay, so let me ask this, and how come we have people who have exceeded that?
We have one person that's exceeded that.
Oh, just one, right?
Yeah.
So are we going to send a thank you letter and move on, or?
I think, when we get the new one appointed and approved, we'll have a little thank you thing and move on. That's the right way to do it.
Can I indicate who I would like to appoint?
I suppose so.
Okay. Abner Goldstein.
Oh, I think he'd be wonderful.
Okay.
I agree with that. Lucky to have him.
So I think there is a, I forgot what office. Mr. Roach, does it go through your office? It used to go through the last CBO.
It was probably through your one.
Okay. All right. So we'll get, I'll get all that in motion. And then we'll clean it up, and then we'll start working on one for next year.
Did you hear that?
Did you want to say something, Colleen?
I guess not.
Okay. You ready?
Mel has something else. Mel, anything else on this? Did you have something else on this topic?
Yes, I would like to, I have something else on this item.
Okay, please.
Item number six, under operations and organization, this, the background requirements for committee Originally, the requirement was a background in finance, accounting, or money management. In March of 2016, the board, the school board, the school board adopted a change. And what was added to those backgrounds was, or public K through 12 education. That background was added. And I am going to recommend that that addition be removed. Because it's not consistent with the mission and the focus of the committee. And I want to, I want to demonstrate that to you. One of the five current committee members has a non-financial background. If another were to be appointed, and it certainly could be if we leave that in, so if another were to be appointed with a non-financial background, and two members of the committee were absent from a meeting, as is frequently the case, then a majority of the quorum of the Finance Committee would likely have no background in finance. And that's unacceptable, in my opinion. So maybe something to give some thought to, but I recommend that that addition, public K through 12 education, be eliminated as a background requirement for Finance Committee membership.
And you would apply that to any new Finance Committee appointee? Correct. Okay.
Correct.
I would, I would support that.
Yeah.
I would support that. Yeah. Thomas, do you have anything on that?
No, not at the moment.
Okay. Kristen?
I'd support that.
Ms. Marcus?
I guess I could never be on the committee.
No, I'm joking.
No, but no, no, I don't mean it that way. I mean, if I wasn't a board member. I mean, no, I believe that's the way it should be. I mean, if you're going to be on the Finance Committee for helping the school board, you should have a little background about finances, and I think that's an important thing to have. Although I think it's important to know a little bit about education, I think this is a financial responsibility, not an educational one.
I would agree. Ms. Sacker?
I would support that. I think that makes perfect sense. Thank you.
Okay, so I guess we can give direction to strike that from item six, or public education.
But I do have a question about this topic, but...
Gersh, go ahead.
Is that okay?
That part's done. Thank you, Mel.
I have...
You have more? Okay, so go ahead, Mel, maybe, maybe I'm going to agree with you.
One other thing is that I have a thought or two with regard to the mission statement modifications. However, my preference would be to meet, for me to meet with the chairman of the committee and discuss my thoughts, my ideas, before I throw them out.
Okay. Yeah, I would like to hear from the committee too on that idea of a mission statement, so after you meet with them, they can also bring back whatever their feelings are.
And in fact, I think we have a date.
Great. So I had a question. A former Finance Committee member approached me, actually today, Dr. Brighi, and since I'm not a member of that committee, I said I would get back or bring this up today, since this was being brought, the topic of discussion about membership and Finance Committee issues was being brought up tonight. So I thought it was an appropriate forum for us to have this discussion. The question was, what is the, you know, how does the committee interact with staff? From his perspective, he was saying that when he was on the committee, it was the assistant superintendent of business services who would, you know, they would work on specific issues having to do with finance, and then they would work through those when they would meet. And so his perception was that that has changed, that it's coming, it's a superintendent, and he says, you know, that's not really fair, because the business office, the business office should really be at the helm of that committee, that's the way it was established. I think I might have asked Mr. Spitz today when I ran into him for five minutes, but we didn't have time to really discuss it. So question or answer?
Sure.
And if so, maybe, I don't know, Colleen, were you there when this committee started? I don't know. I just...
I was there at the beginning.
Do you want to take the...
Been five years.
Can you speak in the microphone?
Because we can't hear you, yeah.
So I have been a member for five years now, and my experience has been, we worked with Latonya primarily as a driving force when she was with us, and now we're now working with Wade. So I would say that the driving force behind it is the business office.
I would also agree with that. The only thing that is on the agenda is that there's a superintendent's report, which is, it's very strange that that's on there, because that pulls away from really what the discussion should be doing, but...
That was his point.
And that was on there before I got to the district three years ago, but it's, you know, it clearly is driven, the entire agenda, all of the documents, all of the materials, it comes all out of the business office. I just attend like I attend most meetings.
May I remark about that?
Sure.
I was a charter member of that committee and served on it for four years. In our agendas, the superintendent, there was, there was no report from the superintendent. There was no need for a report from the superintendent. It was the assistant superintendent for business who provided the data and the information and the guidance. From time to time, the superintendent would come and attend a meeting to learn something about the finance committee, about finances. So... So I would strongly recommend that the superintendent's report be removed from the agendas.
I guess, I, my personal response is I always enjoy it, because it helps bring me up to date as what's going on in the schools, and not because I feel it's driving the finance committee or what, what we discuss, but just I find it informative. And I think it's good for us to know what's going on in the schools.
Well, you're, you're right about that it informs you about what's going on. The problem is that, for example, I'll just make one example, if the superintendent gives a report on the, the progress of the new middle school, well, then that, the fact that he has introduced that opens the meeting to all kinds of discussions about the middle school or what he has had to say, and in my opinion, it reduces the, it reduces the meeting to what's commonly called a bull session.
We could perhaps ask for a report, but not recognize that it's not going to be discussed in any way. Kind of an update. I don't know.
Maybe what I'd like to, since you're going to be having a conversation with Mrs. Nair about, maybe you can go into more detail about this and.
I think so.
I think that would be helpful. But, you know, one thing that would be helpful for me also, or I don't know how the board feels about this, is, so this person I was talking to, Mrs. Nair, was saying to me also that often they would come to the board, not every month, but, you know, maybe every other month or on a quarterly basis, and also report back to the board what kind of work you all are doing in your committee. Because there's two members of the board in that committee, but because of Brown Act, they're not able to really repeat that back to us if there's a discussion or something that they've asked to look into. So that would be incredibly helpful, whatever you are all working on or have an interest or, that would be helpful, just like tonight's discussion, having that gentleman come before the board and go over his presentation, you know, we, a lot, the five of us feel that that would be incredibly helpful to, to learn about. I think that that would probably be helpful to have you or the chairperson come back. Any thoughts, Dr. Bragg? I mean, Dr. Bragg usually is good about including it, but again, it should be coming from the chair of the person, I mean, the chairman.
Yeah, I think that your, your public comment tonight should have actually been an update from the finance committee, and then we should be having probably at least three or four of those a year to the board, if, you know, more if necessary, but, but I know we tried to get, we tried to get one earlier, earlier in the year, you came and did an update and kind of lagged a little bit before we called you back, but we need to be, as a board, a little more vigilant about having the committees that are supposed to be advising and reporting to us, advising and reporting to us. So I agree with that. Okay, thank you. Have anything else on this, colleagues? Okay. Communications?
All right. The high school fall play will be held at Horstmann Auditorium this Thursday, November 14th, Friday, November 15th, and Saturday, November 16th at 7:00 PM. This year's play is the Imaginary Invalid. Next Tuesday, November 19th, is the BV Middle School Autumn Orchestra Concert at 6:30 PM, and the high school has their winter orchestra concert that same night at Horstmann at 7:00 PM. BV Middle School has their band concert on Thursday, November 21st at 6:30. I know there's a board meeting, don't worry. You can all wait. Oh, no.
We're moving it. I'll talk about it.
Oh, never mind. I was going to say you could stream it. But the high school blood drive is December 5th. All donors will receive a free AMC movie ticket, and the first 15 donors get two free AMC movie tickets, and this is open to the whole community. Oh, and then after you donate your blood on Thursday, you can head on over to the Saban Theater to enjoy the theater Broadway night.
Thank you very much, Thomas. Mr. Spitz, any comments?
I wish I could have made these comments while all the kids were here from the, from the science fair. I'm sure glad I didn't have to judge those, those, those offerings, because there were so many of them that were terrific. Really sensational. I even learned of a brilliant new way to heat my pool. I learned that. I learned how to build a bridge. Learned an awful lot. So it was terrific.
I also want to congratulate the, all of the participants really at the science fair. It was tremendous. But in particular, thanks to BHEF, to Dr. Kalt, our amazing PTA that put it all together, the students, faculty, volunteers, and parents that were involved, because as we know, things like this take a village. Nobody's done their project or presented their project or conducted a science fair on their own. So thanks again to everyone involved. I actually want to give a shout out to Rebecca for the outstanding updates to the website and the social media presence. I love that it's so streamlined. I love that there's more of an identity and a presence in these different platforms, and the parents really seem to be engaging through it, so I think that's great. And also the middle school sports program, where, you know, that, now that we're at the end of our first season, I just, it is so incredibly rewarding to see the, the interaction between the kids and their coaches, because there's a lot of different coaches for all the different sports. It is so incredibly positive, and the impact that it's had on the kids that are belonging to a team and learning to work together and learning how to integrate. I mean, it's just, it's a beautiful thing, so I'm really, I'm proud of all of us for making, for making that a commitment, for seeing it through. I'm proud of all of the students and the coaches and faculty and staff that support them, and, and parents, because it's tremendously positive.
Well, sitting third in the role gives me very little to talk about, but I did want to have something to say about the science fair, because I really enjoyed it immensely. I was loved that I wasn't a judge, because I got to talk to the kids as a scientist and really to see what they had learned and what they were going to, what they've got out of it, and to hear them converse and discuss their results. They were so eloquent, they were just wonderful. And I love the fact that there were so many kids that worked together on it. There were like collaborations. Some kids did it alone, but some of the kids did it with three or four other students, and it really was wonderful to see that collaboration. I just hope that this encourages more students to do it next year, and that it can be even bigger. I would love to see more high school students doing it. I love the projects that the high school students did it, and I look forward to next year, because I know it'll be even bigger and better, and thank you for everybody that was involved in it.
So I, I would just echo the sentiments of everyone to my right. I think, you know, it gets better and bigger every year, and I'm just extremely proud of that day and everything that the students do. I'm very happy, actually, that I wasn't a judge this year, because like Mrs. Marcus says, I actually got to walk around and, and talk to the kids a little bit differently from the years past, and so I appreciated just, just the experience. So thank you to Dr. Kalt and her team, BHEF, Tina, Nathan, for just putting the extra work and just, they do this so easy now, but I know it's a lot of work. They make it look seamless, but I know that there's a lot of detail. And I want to talk about a cha, my, I had sent an email with the dates. Do you want to lead that discussion, Mr. Marcus?
Yeah. I have.
Okay, great. There's two dates, right?
Yep.
Okay, got it.
Okay, thank you very much. I did get to judge, in fact, I was a super judge this year at the, it said, it said it on my big giant green vest. Probably the same, probably the same one you wear when you're doing cars in the morning. And that was a different experience, because I didn't focus on one or two projects, I got to look at a whole grade level, and the kids were amazing. They, they answered questions that I had for them, scientific questions, and they were so aware of environmental issues and addressing them in their projects, and that was wonderful to see. Okay, our next scheduled board meeting, which was supposed to be November 21st, is now going to be November 26th, which is two weeks, normal day from here. And then the December 3rd meeting, which is also on tonight's agenda, is actually going to be moved to December 10th. We have several colleagues attending the CSBA conference in San Diego, so out of respect for them, well, we wouldn't have quorum anyway, so unless Mel and I want to just have a meeting. So those will be moved to December 10th. So thank you, colleagues, for bringing those to our attention, and of course, December 17th is the organizational meeting. So that is it for tonight. Thank you, everybody, and have a wonderful evening. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.